...to deal with our housing issues in the future. And lastly, we closed some loopholes to deal with demolition permits. Members, again, people wanted more, people wanted less, people wanted nothing at all. Let's move forward today, send a message to the tenants that we want to protect their rights, to the property owners that we want to protect their rights also, but that this is a significant, it's not a first step. I view it as a quantum leap in the right direction, and I ask for a unanimous "I" vote. And again, I couldn't have done this without all of the colleagues, Parks, well, Gruel, Ed Reyes, who's not here, Bill, Eric Garcetti, who introduced the legislation that deals specifically with the Ellis Act, my seatmate, Jack Weiss. Thank all of you. I think we've done a pretty good job.
Mr. Rosendahl, then Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. When Herb Wesson came on the council the very first day, I pulled up the chair next to him and I said, "We've got to talk about the Ellis Act." And the reason I brought it up was the obvious reasons that my folks throughout the 11th district are Ellis-ed out of their affordable apartments, and it's become a huge crisis for me and everything I'm doing. I have a street called Granville right now, where half of the buildings on that street have been announced that they're going to be into a condo conversion, and the people are being kicked out. We have Lincoln Place and others. And I am just thrilled that Mr. Wesson took leadership with Mr. Reyes and all the other people he mentioned, but it was an initial motion by Wendy Gruel and Eric Garcetti that was there 11 months ago that talked about, "Let's define the Ellis Act from a city perspective. What rights do tenants have? Is it all the developers, or do the people have rights?" And obviously, the people have rights, and the Ellis Act has some protection for the tenants, and what we're doing here is just outlining them and codifying them, and it's a beginning in the direction that I frankly think, in my district, I need a condo conversion moratorium to take a deep breath and a timeout, which we'll talk after the recess more thoroughly about it in the Housing Committee as well as before the City Council. But I applaud all my colleagues who got involved in this. Mr. Cardenas was there as well. Everybody around the horse, Mr. Parks, so on, believe that people come first, and this is a step in that direction, a beginning, a new beginning for our great city, and I look forward to more action by our council in the weeks and months ahead on this whole issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. President, and to my colleagues, Mr. Wesson and Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Reyes, who is not here today. Similarly, I went to, Bill, I went to Ed several months ago and said, "Are you seeing citywide what I'm seeing in my district, which is a number of apartments, affordable apartments, particularly in Studio City and Valley Village that are being converted?" And in my district, it's, they call it condo conversion, but it is demolition of apartments, and two different things. I do have a few questions of our wonderful city attorney, Judy Reel. She could come to the table, but before I ask the question, colleagues, what we have before us today is one part of the larger issue. There are two aspects to the challenges we're facing in keeping affordable housing, being within the Ellis Act. One is tenant protections, and two is land use policy that is critically important. Before us today are the items relative to tenant protections. We sat, and Judy was there, and Manny and Chuck and others, and representatives from Legal Aid were there that day, when we held a public hearing in my district at Colfax Elementary School, really kind of the first public discussion we had, which was, as Judy said, that was a tough one, because, colleagues, there is nothing more heart-wrenching and concerning to us as elected officials to have someone who comes to you and says, "I've lived in this apartment for 14 years. I cannot afford to live anymore in this neighborhood or this community," or even within the city of Los Angeles, "how can you help me?" And tears streaming down their face. That is something that we're trying to deal with, and we had Judy here, who is a compassionate person, but was also saying, "We have restrictions on the state law as to what we can do," and a recognition of that. So before us today are three, well, there's two ordinances, and I think an amending item. If you could just, you know, describe real quickly for us, and hold my time, on the three ordinances that are, there's two ordinances, I'm sorry, and one that asks you to draft the ordinance on the partial Ellis-ing.
No, the partial Ellis-ing is actually, if I might, I believe what's before you today is one draft ordinance with an amending motion, and then there is a separate draft ordinance, but that has not been approved as to form in legality. That simply requests you to ask the Housing Department to conduct the necessary sequel review, and that has to do with when you demolish an apartment building and rebuild an apartment building, if the former building were subject to rent stabilization ordinance, so will the new building. And that requires a sequel study, and so that is not before you for approval, but simply for direction. The one that is before you for approval incorporates, I believe to the fullest extent lawful, the tenant protections authorized by the Ellis Act, and it also includes your partial, your elimination of the partial Ellis. So if you want me to just take a couple of minutes to summarize, it says that now if you've Ellis-ed a building, if you've evicted people pursuant to the Ellis Act, you have to let the city know 30 days before you re-rent that unit again. And the reason for that is that with the amending motion, a tenant will have five years after they've been evicted to look for that notice, and when they see the notice that it's going to be re-rented, they can ask the owner to be able to rent it. It also provides for civil penalties, that if you evict pursuant to the Ellis Act, you're doing it because you want to withdraw those units, you're going out of the rental housing business. If you re-rent within two years, you will now be subject to a lawsuit by the tenants and by the city. It provides for-
And is that, sorry question, is that if you've torn down the building and rebuilt it, or just if you've never, you've never converted them?
If you've never, if you've never converted them. If you simply have evicted people, and you know what, maybe you changed your mind about going forward with a demolition and you want to re-rent them. Well, now, if you do that within two years, you face civil penalties by the tenants and the city. If you re-rent, if you evict people because you're going out of the business, but you re-rent within five years, that new unit will be subject to the, not only subject to the RSO, but you can't rent, you have to rent at the old, former rate, plus the allowable cost of living that would have been allowed in the interim. Also, if you, if you evict people pursuant to the Ellis Act and they notify you that they want to be able to re-rent, if you re-rent it within two years as the landlord, you have to send them a letter and offer to re-rent that unit to them. And lastly, it incorporates your motion that our ordinance appears to have allowed people to partially Ellis, that is, to withdraw less than all of the accommodations from a building. The Ellis Act was not intended to allow that, and in fact, in a legal brief, our city once argued that under our RSO, you can't allow that, or you're not allowed to do that. So this clarifies that you cannot withdraw less than all of the accommodations in a structure or a building, thereby preventing landlords from withdrawing just a unit at a time.
And colleagues, I wanted Judy to talk about that from the city attorney's office, because what, again, we have some unscrupulous apartment owners and developers, there's those that follow the rules, but what we wanted to do was protect those tenants, because we all know, as we see the articles, whether the condo conversion market up or down, who knows for sure, but what we didn't want to happen is someone who lived in their apartment for, again, for 14 years, gets this, gets relocation dollars and is fearful of not finding a place, so moves out really quickly, because they, they're in a rush and concerned about it. They go and find a new location and rent, and lo and behold, six months later, eight months later, things change, and their whole life had been uprooted.
Correct.
And so we're trying to protect that. Similarly, to protect where an unscrupulous owner says, "I don't like tenant A, B, and C," for whatever reason, "but I like everybody else," and saying they're getting out of the rental business to just those three individuals.
Correct.
That similarly is what we're looking at. As well as part of what Mr. Wesson put together was the issue, for example, there are qualified tenants, and I will try to be real quick here, qualified tenants who can stay longer than the 120 days, up to a year.
Correct.
One of the concerns that I had, and something we look at, is if there's 50 units in that building and you have three qualified tenants, elderly, the 47 other people move out of that building, now you have just three elderly individuals living in a pretty much vacant apartment complex.
Correct.
And I think that is scary in and of itself. And so as we move forward on some of the items, on, I think it's item 20 has some of these items, that's something I am concerned about as well, and go ahead.
And my ordinance doesn't address this, but just to let you know, the Ellis Act does allow a landlord, if you're evicting an entire building and you have three elderly tenants who are entitled to a year, you are permitted to offer a year to everybody, even the ones who otherwise wouldn't have been entitled to it. So there are, the landlord's not required to do that, but at least there are some measures in place to try and prevent that from happening.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. I will close just briefly, which is, again, as mentioned, today's issues before us and action items are relative to the tenant protections, some of which we've been working on for a few years to make sure we're in place, because these evictions are happening today and tomorrow and the next day. But similarly, the land use discussions, I have forwarded from my, many of my constituents, all of the ideas and suggestions of land use, in addition to what Mr. Rosendahl has suggested, what Mr. Wesson has suggested, Mr. Parks, and we look forward to having a discussion on that, because there are some issues relative to the city attorney and no can address, not today, because that's not before us.
Right.
But related to condo conversions and some of the model ordinances that are across the state that we might consider, and two, the issues on how that reflects on demolition versus condo conversions, which are two separate. But today, we have a chance to say to tenants, "We're here, we're trying to protect you in this way during the laws we know that exist now, and we'll work with the, many of the advocacy organizations and tenant groups to see what our next steps will be as well, very, very quickly." Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I'd ask the city attorney, would you re-explain on the back page of the committee report what it means as it relates to withdrawing less than all accommodations? Because I didn't quite understand what that meant.
Okay, that's, there's a phrase that you might hear called "partial Ellis-ing." The Ellis Act itself says that this act is not intended to allow landlords to withdraw less than all of the accommodations. It says, "If you want to evict people because you're getting out of the rental housing business, then you need to get out of the business, and you, and so we will protect your right to withdraw all of the accommodations, but this law does not protect your right to withdraw just one accommodation in a huge rental building."
When you say "accommodations," you referring to a unit?
A rental unit, yes. So this will require a landlord to wish to exercise their Ellis Act right, to essentially withdraw all of the rental units in a building, rather than, the testimony, I believe, is from certain people, is that unscrupulous landlords would just withdraw one unit and then turn around and actually re-rent that unit. So it was not a good faith withdrawal, and this allows you to go out of business, but not a unit at a time.
Okay. The other thing, does the ordinance cover all units or apartments in the city, or only those apartments that are under the RSO?
Under the RSO, because it allows for a good cause for eviction under the RSO, and if you're not an RSO building, then you don't need to justify why it is you're evicting a tenant.
I mean, but on the, what we're talking about on the conversions of condos?
It does not, this, the ordinance that's before you today does not apply to conversions and condos. It may be that after you evict somebody, perhaps down the road, you'll want to convert or demolish, but this just applies to with evicting people because you want to get out of the rental housing market, and it doesn't discuss what your future use of the building will be.
Okay, but it also only deals with rent stabilization property?
Yes, it does.
Okay. The other issue, I was looking at the material, and I think we looked at some other ordinances in San Diego and looking at, I think, Boston and San Francisco, and maybe I can throw this to Herb. One of the things I was interested in is that with the rent stabilization or the issues in San Diego, they used a much smaller amount of money dealing with per-unit condo conversion, and whether we considered that as it relates to the city of LA, we're talking about 1,500, there they're talking about 200.
What we looked at, Mr. Parks, are at a variety of cities. We felt that the San Diego model was too low. We felt, given the other cities in California, that we would put this at a level, in fact, let me put it to you this way, the increase in the cost was not solely based on us trying to come close to San Diego, Boston, Sacramento, or what have you. Technically, that increase in money will be used to help us with another component in the plan that deals with the enforcement of violations. So that was driven by what we thought the amount of money we would need to ensure the added protections to the tenants by having the money to make sure that the various departments had the resources to go out. So primarily, that was the reason, but also, our number was, in essence, so low compared to everyone else other than San Diego.
So basically, we get a full-cost recovery for our city employees. Let me ask you, one other part of San Diego's that looked a little interesting was the 7% sliding scale for subsidy. Did we consider that where, I believe if there's over 7% vacancies, they did not require the subsidy for tenants to move?
Well, what we had hoped that we would be able to do, we wanted to get something in the pipeline and get it moving. This will afford us the opportunity to have additional discussions as this goes forward.
Okay.
And that, that will be something that will be incorporated. There are a lot of other elements that I personally found very interesting, but we did not have the time to get the type of data that we need. But when the various departments or the city attorney's office in particular comes back to us, I think that we will be able to have an informed discussion that will make this package or proposal a better proposal.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I just want to commend Mr. Wesson for moving on this, and Mr. Reyes, who's not here today, but I think it's, like you said, not a first step, it is a giant step from all the issues that we dealt with, and I think there was probably a dozen motions somewhere in your committee talking about pieces of this. And so I think we've made a good decision not to go to a moratorium, but certainly, I think it gives us something to work towards, and then with the other item on the agenda dealing with rent stabilization, I would hope that study gives us even more grounds, because what landlords and owners tell me, that what's driving the condominium conversion issue is the rent stabilization issue, because people 10 years ago, because of insurance issues, would not have gone into conversion, because they would not have dealt with. But now, today, with this 20 years of rent stabilization, the cost is hurting them, and I think that we've made a good balance as a first step. The other issue, I think, in dealing with the housing, it's important that, and I mentioned to you before and during the committee, that we keep looking at ways we can encourage and embrace people in homeownership, if that means from going to an apartment renter to a condo owner, that the city would be well-served in using some of its housing trust fund to pay down payments in second, soft seconds, that makes people homeowners, because I believe we're maybe one of the lowest cities in the nation, something like 30% in homeownership. Those would be invaluable tools to cause that, to embrace conversion in that regard, if we can assist people in becoming homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. It's our last speaker on the cuke. Anybody else from council wishing to be heard on this, these items? If not, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved, the ordinances will carry over.
And, Mr. President, just for council's information, that ordinance does have an urgency clause, and when it is in for second reading, it will require 12 votes to-
Okay. Because of the urgency clause, colleagues, when that comes back, that will require 12 votes. I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas and take out of order special item on the findings. Mr. City Attorney, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is special item number two. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested the council to offer a reward for the information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspect in the shooting death of Michael Celis. Immediate action is required to remove this threat to the community as soon as possible. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. On the findings, if we can please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is now before us. Mr. Cardenas, please.
Thank you very much, Council President and colleagues. It's with great sadness that I bring this motion forward, because it's pertaining to the loss of a life, the loss of Michael Celis, who on July 18, 2006, at approximately 6:30 PM was returning home from work, and for no apparent reason whatsoever, someone came up to him in a white vehicle with several men in it, and they shot him, and we lost him. At this point in time, our police department has been working diligently and very hard on trying to solve this crime and take these criminals off the street, but at this time, we ask that the people of Los Angeles, anyone who has any information about this murder, since this murder, come forward, and today we're offering a $50,000 reward to those individuals who can help us solve this crime and take these criminals off the street. And at this time, I'd like to take this opportunity to allow Michael's parents, Miguel and Maria, to say a few words about, and plead to the community for assistance and help.
Thank you very much. My name is Miguel Celis, and my wife is Maria Celis. I wanted to thank Councilmen Tony Cardenas and Jose Ormejo for this opportunity to come to the stand and, well, I hear the council say, a $50,000 reward. My son's life worked more than that, and I'm asking everybody to help whoever, somebody up there saw everything. It was six during the evening, and I know somebody up there is holding something. Please, I'm asking, very nice, to help us find whoever did this crime, committed this crime, because they don't belong on the streets, for the safety of my kids, Christian and Stephanie, and the rest of the community in Benice, in the city of Benice. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
Gracias. Mi nombre es Maria. Soy la mamá de Marco. Solamente quiero decirles que por favor se compadecan del dolor que estamos pasando. Que si alguien sabe algo, por favor nos ayuden. Creemos que la muerte de nuestro hijo no quede impune, y también creemos que otras familias no estén pasando por el mismo dolor que estamos pasando ahorita. Dios te los va a agradecer, y nosotros también de todo corazón. Gracias a todos, y esperemos que todos nos ayuden a encontrar a los culpables de la muerte de mi hijo. Una muerte que le merezca.
Hi, I am the mother of Michael, and I just want to ask you, please, to help us to find the person who committed the crime, so it's going to be good for the community, and please, help us find him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council members. We appreciate your attention and your diligence, and I want to thank the community ahead of time for taking a deep breath, listening, watching, and understanding that it's time to step forward to take these criminals off the street, and our city will handle it in a professional manner. We need your help, and we will certainly protect you as well, so please do not fear. The one thing that we need to do together is do the right thing and take these criminals off the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and thank you very much to the family. Our deepest condolences are with you. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Everything today will go forth with without objection, colleagues. If we could take up special item 15 next, but just before that, I wanted to introduce a group of students that we have here before us from the Constitutional Rights Foundation. I think they're here in the front row. If we can ask them to please stand and welcome to City Hall, and please give them a round of applause. And over here, as well. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you very much for being here. I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks on special item 15 next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to add on your introduction that because some of these schools are in the 8th district, I'd like to comment on those just where they represent, Downtown Magnet High School, College Ready Academy High School, which is on King Boulevard, and also the King Drew Magnet, also Crenshaw High School, Venice High School, Emmanuel Arts High School. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask, Mr. President, we could have Mr. Dean Leavenworth come up and also-
We do have four cards on this. Do you want to take those ahead of time?
What I'd like to see, if we could have the cards, but the two main people, if we can have Mr. Leavenworth and the representative from NFL Films, if we can bring them up, because I think there's questions as the two main participants in this.
Since we haven't had the mandatory public hearing, why don't we do the cards, and then we'll give Mr. Leavenworth some extra time, if that's all right with you?
Okay.
We have your card, Mr. Leavenworth. Do you want to wait for that presentation table? Okay, Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm all in favor of this. We want to get the NFL out there on Time Warner Cable. It's a great network, great cable channel, 11:30 Tuesday, Thursday night. Thank you.
Michael Hunt?
NFL Network? I'm all for football, man. Time Warner and the Matt Dowd Show at 11:30 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the football show following that. Time Warner, I think you should make basic cable for everybody and do a good job on it, and we're here to promote the NFL and Matt Dowd running for neighborhood council. All right, now, hey, Eric, I do got a question for you. I left something with you about decorum and the rules.
We have to stick to the topic that is before us. We have item number 16, I believe, or 15?
Can you address me when you get finished?
Not while I'm in the chair. You're out of order right now, but I'd be happy to get word to you. Judy Fearing and Dean Leavenworth, if you'd like to come forward, those are both folks that are here on this item, if you'd like to come forward, and I'll recognize Mr. Leavenworth, if you'd like to come forward, and Judy Fearing as well, to the podium, if you don't mind, and be available there to give some comments and to respond to any questions Mr. Parks might have as well. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, come up here, Dean.
It's a protocol, Mr. Parks, usually just to have people stay at the podium unless they're city employees, if that's okay with you?
All right, okay. Maybe, Dean, you could start off just telling us what you believe the issue is, and we'll have NFL Films also present their position.
Thank you, Councilman. Council members, the issue of the NFL Network, while the issue of programming is outside of the direct regulatory authority of the city, we're here today because it's obviously important to Councilman Parks, to other council members, and if it's important to you, it's important to us. So let me begin by saying that. First of all, Time Warner wants to air the NFL Network. We're in negotiations. We're in negotiations. We want this to happen. We would like to carry it on the digital tier, the digital sports tier, where it has previously aired, in both Comcast and Adelphia systems. There's an indication in the motion that it's on basic, or was on basic, it's not, and that's just, there's a lot of tiers, and that's understandable. I did bring copies of the other lineups to just to support that, and I'll be happy to distribute that to you. We think that the people who want to see the NFL, who want to see it on the digital tier, would like to put it there. We don't think that our other customers should be required to pay for this, this network if it's, when it's very, very clearly a sports and a specialty sport network, and we look forward to working with the NFL, getting this thing solved, and making sure that this thing goes along very quickly with a resolution that's good for both of us and for our subscribers.
Let me just clarify, we did make a mistake. We call it basic. It should have been on the digital, or what we call digital basic, which if you buy digital, you get the NFL station.
Actually, it's on several different tiers. It's not necessarily on a, even a basic digital tier. There's specific, a sports tier or a variety tier, so it's something where you do have to go and ask for it specifically with a package.
But without getting into your intimate negotiations, is the conflict that Time Warner wants to put it on the premium level to where you must pay for it as opposed to getting it with digital?
At the highest level, without getting into the details of it, because the negotiations are taking place someplace back east, far beyond me. It is currently on a digital tier. That's where we think it belongs. That's where I believe the basic conflict is, and again, at a 30,000-foot level.
The one thing that also drew our attention, we've received a number of calls, could you give us some idea of, in a sense of complaints, and I realize it's not within the jurisdiction of LA, but it's FCC jurisdiction, what is the level of complaint? What is the level of complaints you receive from your people that buy your cable service?
I don't have those, that with me. I wasn't really prepared to answer it. So I just don't have an answer for you. I'm happy to get one for you and get it back to you.
Do you have any idea whether this will get resolved before it's, because I understand September 3rd, we could end up with the station off the air again. And I'm concerned on a couple of issues. One, it's an LA-area-based business. Also, that if we drive customers onto satellite, the city of LA then loses revenue as it relates to the cable industry.
The negotiation, since there are negotiations, if I had that answer, I would have led with that statement and saved the other time. I don't know when that's going to happen. That is really a corporate decision between the NFL Network and Time Warner Cable.
So the September 3rd date is still a drop-dead date, one way or the other?
As of this moment, that's where we are.
Okay. Have, in the sense of this particular issue, what additional concern now that we almost have a monopoly in the city? Time Warner has almost all cable business. Is there any concern from your corporate headquarters of how that might impact the 600,000 cable viewers in the city of LA?
You know, the issue of a monopoly comes up periodically, and if, we are, we are far from a monopoly.
I'm just saying in the city of LA.
Well, even in the city of LA, we are far from a monopoly. The penetration of satellite is higher here than in most parts of the country. Penetration of DSL is higher. We are in a very competitive environment, and that drives back to the heart of this issue, which is, I don't want to come back here six months from now and be talking to you about why rates went up because of passing this cost on to all subscribers. We are not only a cable company where we represent the cable company itself, we represent our subscribers, and we are taking this position because we feel this is what's best for our subscribers. And that's, that's why we're doing it.
Let me just clarify. When you say you're in a competitive industry, is that reference that you're in competition with other technologies as opposed to competition with other cable companies?
Precisely. There's obviously satellite penetration here. It's an option. You referenced it in your motion. Satellite is definitely our competitor. Telephone companies with our DSL and our phone service, and soon, as you well know, very possibly in the video market. So we are aware and very cognizant of the fact that we're in a competitive environment, and that's why we are taking this position. We want to do what we feel is best for our customers. We want to make sure that people can get what they want, but we want to make sure that not everybody is going to carry that weight. And we do firmly believe that this is going to be resolved. I mean, I stood before you a couple of weeks ago and told you that we were negotiating, that we want to get this resolved. We want to get it resolved. That's what negotiation is all about.
I just hope, after you told me that and I went home and it was off the air, I hope that negotiations go a little better than the last time.
We hope so, too.
The other issue I was going to ask you, is there some unique relationship that Time or Time Warner or cable has with the NFL Network as relates to ads or TV or cable revenue for ads?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Colleagues, is this question Mr. Leavenworth, before we bring up the NFL TV, then we can deal with it that way?
Sure. And then Mr. Labonge, Mr. Rosendahl next on the cue of the chair. We also have that card as well. I'm sorry I misplaced it, but if the representative of NFL would like to come forward.
I think Mr. Rosendahl.
Oh, do you want to go to them? Okay. So Mr. Labonge is next, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
What do you want to do?
The question didn't ring the other guy.
Well, here's the thing. I'm going to give, I'm going to pass to Parks for another minute of my time, because he has some questions right now, because he was on his, what do you want me to do?
I thought if we'd all ask questions of the Time Warner rep before we bring up the NFL TV rep.
Okay, NFL Network rep?
Yeah.
Right, you want to be on this channel, right? Good. Mr. Leavenworth, is it?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Here we go. I'm very disappointed that you don't provide this for your viewers. It's absolutely a tremendous station, along with the History Channel, along with A and E, along with CNN and all that other stuff. And it's very disappointing right now at the start of football season. Los Angeles is deprived without a football team. And interesting enough, in the paper today, first time in my lifetime, a young man who went to modern-day high school here, played down the street at USC, is going to his first pro game this Saturday night. You know who that is, Sharon Delugat? It is Matt Liner, the Heisman Trophy winner for USC. Never been to a pro football game. All we got is TV, so I'm asking you to step up and find a way to make it happen. NFL Network came to Los Angeles. I think their studios are in Culver City, if I have it correctly. Rick Eisen is a tremendous guy, and you know who I'm talking for? I'm talking for my son Charles, who's eight, who asked me, Mr. Wesson, about how Aaron Brooks is going to do in Oakland. Now, he wouldn't know that he got to Oakland unless there was an NFL Network that told him that he was released by, traded by the Saints. With all that, so important, because the young people don't get to see the game here live, but they see it on television. And NFL Network has really expanded that opportunity. So I stand to ask you to make it on your channel. I was disappointed. We talked about this after we voted on the contract when Time Warner took over the whole city. And it is 600,000, that how many subscribers in the city? That's a lot of homes that have it. So please hear my plea to pass the ball to you, Dean, to make sure that you go forward and get it on the TV, because the season's about to start soon. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand up with all kinds of feelings on this. I haven't, as you guys know, my colleagues, I've been a cable exec, and I've had the gun put to the head by programmers multiple times. A programmer is a programmer, and they want certain prices for the packaging of their deals. Fair enough. The cable operator has certain programming decisions to make, but the questions for him are the following. Dean, is the, is the NFL on satellite with their product as well?
Yes.
Is the contract in negotiations with Time Warner a national contract battle or just the regional?
It is national.
Okay. And how long have you been at the table with the NFL to try to work out a pricing arrangement?
Because those negotiations take place several levels above me.
Of course, sure.
I would say that prior to the close, for certain, we negotiated with 30 different networks. There's carriage, there are contracts that Adelphia and Comcast had that we did not have. We were able to negotiate all of those agreements. There's one left. That's part of negotiations. The NFL wants the best deal for their network. We want the best deal. That's where the loggerhead is. Just to be clear again, we want the channel on the air.
Sure. It's between the Comcast subscriber historically and the rates they paid and the way the NFL wants to get whatever rating or pay or fees.
It's complicated enough that I don't want to try and even summarize it, except to say, it is currently carried on a digital tier. That's where we'd like to carry it. That appears to be the bone of contention.
Okay, what's the digital tier? Explain that versus basic analog.
Very simply, there's a tier that most of us started out with years ago when cable first started, which are basically the channels 1 through 99. You plug it in the back of your TV, you turn the TV on, you view it. It's the lowest tier. It's the tier that most everybody gets prior to going to any further service. It's a very desirable landscape to be a part of. The digital tier is the next set higher up, the channels where you have a box, it's interactive, and that's where you go and get these things.
Does the city have any regulatory power over the digital tier?
The city does not. The cities, the federal law provides that programming is not something that's under regulation from cities, although, again, obviously, we hear the council members and their concerns.
Okay. Those are the kinds of questions that we all need to understand, and Mr. Parks is right on several levels. One, we think the NFL should have a team here in LA. And come on, NFL, get a team here in LA. It's important to us. Get that done. Secondly, we want it on all of our video vendors, be it satellite, or be it the phone company coming into our world, or the cable company. We understand that. We want it. But if it's going to cost an extra nickel or dime, it should be on a tier, because not everybody wants to watch the NFL. But they do want to pick and choose. Frankly, if I had my way, which he's not going to like, I'd rather have Alec Carr. So we pick our own lineup ourselves as to what we put on. A lot of stuff is on basic that doesn't matter to us. We pay for it and stuff like that. That's a whole nother issue, and that's a federal issue. But on this local level here, it's typical in the cable industry. And folks, I never walked back into that Adelphia studio after I left that place, but now that it's Time Warner, I'm looking forward to going back and maybe interacting on their television shows again. But Adelphia did not get my light at all the moment I left that place. But Time Warner's a good company. They have good customer service, good product lineups, and I'm hopeful that you guys and the NFL as a vendor will sit down and work out a deal that works for the best of the customer. Thanks.
And I know, council member, that the parties are trying to come to resolution. And Councilman Labonge, as far as availability of NFL product, NFL teams, there's still more than 100 games that are going to be seen, all available on high definition through a number of other networks. So this isn't something where this is an effective blackout. This is something where it's a negotiation between these two entities. The NFL clearly, the NFL Network clearly wants to be on Time Warner Cable. Time Warner Cable clearly wants the NFL Network to be there. So this is not some attempt to eliminate the availability of games across the country to the residents of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Parks again?
Let's have the NFL Network executive come up, please. Why don't you identify yourself and give us a little overview of what the position of the NFL Network is?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. My name is Judy Fearing, and I've been privileged to work for the NFL Network since its beginning almost three years ago. My role is to raise consumer awareness for NFL Network, the 24-hour, year-round television channel dedicated to America's most popular sport. First, I want to thank the council for its attention to this matter and willingness to take the time today to address the situation on behalf of your constituents and our fans across the Southland. To get to the issue at hand, let me tell you a little bit about tomorrow's programming on NFL Network. Matt Liner, the Heisman Trophy-winning quarterback from USC, a school and an individual that I know the council is very familiar with, is making his NFL debut. The only way for SC fans and for fans across the Southland to see Matt's first game as an Arizona Cardinal is by watching NFL Network at 5:30, five o'clock. Now, the same was true last weekend for Reggie Bush's pro debut for the New Orleans Saints. It was available in Los Angeles only on NFL Network and was one of the 52 preseason games in 24 days that we have been airing. One of NFL Network's main benefits is to serve the fan who follows a team or player performing outside of the market they currently reside in. Now, Los Angeles is full of these types of fans. The wealth of talent like USC and UCLA provide the NFL across all of our teams and markets, and the many residents of LA with roots in other cities makes NFL Network especially relevant, valuable, and desired in this area. Once the regular season starts, we'll have, for the first time ever in the NFL's 86-year history, replays of the four best NFL games from the weekend. We'll also debut a new primetime package of NFL regular season games starting this Thanksgiving when the Broncos go to visit the Chiefs, and our regular season package runs until the end of the season. Football fans in LA want to see these games. We'll also televise college bowl games, as well as studio shows dedicated exclusively to college football. The NFL Network serves all football fans. It's the only channel dedicated to sports of football, and we feel strongly that it deserves a spot in the homes of all Americans as broadly distributed service. It should be available to the young and old, male and female, rich and poor, and all the people that the NFL has represented for decades. We hope that you agree. Thank you very much.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions, just for general awareness of the body here. Is that how many viewers nationwide are plugged in on cable to the NFL Network?
I don't have that exactly. Seth Blansky, our PR manager, may be able to do that.
It's 14 million cable, 27 million satellite. We're in a total of 41 million homes, which makes us the fastest-growing network anywhere. In fact, four of the five largest providers in this country carry us, all on a basic or digital basic level of service, the only one that doesn't is Time Warner.
Do you have a unique ad arrangements dealing with cable on?
Yes. What you found is our other four providers, large providers, Comcast and Adelphia had it in this market, and DirecTV and Dish. They offer it as part of a basic package, because we exchange airtime for ads on our network, which offset the costs we charge, and therefore, they don't have to pass along those costs to the consumer. Time Warner, we've been negotiating with for three years, and their position hasn't changed. They want to offer us on a sports tier where consumers will have to shell out extra money in addition to basic cable, in addition to digital cable, in addition to renting more equipment, and pay for this sports tier to get our network. No one else in the country offers us that way, and we want to make sure all fans have access to this.
Okay. And the final question, do you have a unique game package that's on NFL Cable that could not be received in any other fashion?
Yes. As Judy alluded to, for the preseason especially, Matt Liner's debut is only available on NFL Network. This network's offering 52 national preseason games, and that serves fans who want to follow USC players who play on almost every team across the country. In the regular season, we are the only home to eight primetime regular season games. The Raiders will be on our package, the Broncos, the Chiefs, the Cowboys, the Packers, the Vikings, the Giants, all teams that we feel Los Angeles is interested in seeing.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, just to reiterate, I think the issue, the reason we went forward on this is that not only is this LA-region company that we're talking about, has only been in this region for almost three years, brings jobs and a variety of other things, but also highlights a universal sport that many people are interested in. Although we do not have the authority on this level, this FCC issue, the motion goes forward asking that we would support in our federal legislative support for all legislation regulations in Congress of FCC to ensure the broadest distribution of NFL Network. It is, I believe, not just an entertainment issue. I'm concerned about, it's a financial issue, that the more that we do on cable that's driving some of our 600,000 customers into satellite, the less revenue that we have, because we do not get revenue from satellite. And so I would ask, I vote on this motion and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the previous question.
Okay, there's been motion to call the previous question. Is there any objection?
I wanted to say something. Thank you for being in Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is an objection, we'll take a vote on it then. So we will vote on the previous question. A yes vote is to end debate, no vote is to continue. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that closes debate. We have this item before us. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
That is approved. If we can take 74 out of order next, colleagues, if there's no objection, we'll take item 74. And we do have public speaker cards. We'll move for a 10-minute public hearing, which can be extended or not. Oh, I'm sorry. And just before that, I want to recognize Mr. Cardenas, and then we will move forward with item 74.
While the public speakers are assembling, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank a wonderful employee of the city of Los Angeles for the last five years. She's been working for me for the last three years. It's Arcelia Arce, and I'd like to say a couple of tidbits about her history. She went to one of the best universities in the world, University of California, Santa Barbara, where she got her bachelor's degree, but doesn't have a football team. And then she went to another university that probably is more well-known for their football team than anything else, USC. So she's well-educated. She's a wonderful human being. She produced wonderful, great work that many of us worked on here in the city council, and we're going to miss her, but she's going on to bigger and better things. She's going to be with the Public Affairs with LA Universal Preschool to help our young people throughout the city. Congratulations, Arcelia, and we're going to miss you.
Yes, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let anybody, everybody know that had a concern that the dog has been adopted, and we in the city still have our 100% adoption rate, and the new proud mama is in the back waving at us. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for giving the dog a home.
And thank you, Mr. Westen, for doing that. Congratulations to both friends, animal and human. We have, colleagues, seven cards on the for side, we have 13 cards on the against side, and we have eight cards that did not fill out our general comments. So we will begin with the for side. We'll have 10-minute clock overall, which can be extended by a motion from a council member, but we will put the speaker's clock at 1 and the overall clock at 10 minutes, and begin with Brady Westwater, who will be our first speaker. We'll do three from the for side to begin, Russell Brown and Estela Lopez. Those will be our first three speakers. Mr. Westwater?
My name is Brady Westwater. I'm president of Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, and I'm speaking officially for a change. We have not taken possession of the exact issue, it just came up, but repeatedly, we have let the council and the mayor know, public safety is our number-one concern. We've repeatedly asked for more police, we've repeatedly given gifts to the police department, recently bought a horse, laptops, gang cameras. We've done everything we can to help make for more efficient police services in our neighborhood. And there's one thing our Neighborhood Council has stressed over and over again, is that public safety is issue number one in this neighborhood. Secondly, Russell Brown is out. He'll be back in a minute. We just had to catch him, but he will be here shortly.
Okay. I'll just, I'll move him down. We'll come back to him from that pile. So next would be Estela Lopez, and then our third on the for side will be Carrie Gatlin.
Councilmembers, good morning. Thank you very much. Estela Lopez, representing the Central City East Association, 1,500 businesses in and around the Skid Row area. I would like to give the Sergeant-at-Arms photographs that were taken on Monday that I would like you to see. They were taken in Mr. Weezer's district. May the Sergeant-at-Arms please take these? Thank you very much. They will graphically show you something that Mr. Weezer and Ms. Perry know very well, and why this motion is being put through. Yes, of course, this is to support more police in the downtown area, specifically Skid Row, in and around the area that I represent. But what you are going to be doing with this is providing law enforcement to save lives. The pictures that you will see, that I've just passed out, show individuals who live on the street injecting themselves with syringes filled with narcotics. If you place more police officers on the street, they will have an immediate impact against the people who are preying on the unsheltered on the sidewalks of downtown Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie Gatlin, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Council. Carrie Gatlin, representing the Union Rescue Mission. And I'd like to tell you a little story about a woman that was actually raped and beaten severely out in front of our building a few weeks ago. She was raped inside a van. The gentleman in the van, obviously, was not one of our homeless guests, and he was one of those predators that comes into our area to hold what I refer to as drug bazaars and sell their wares on the street and prey on the people that we serve at the mission. I honestly am quite shocked today that there are 13 people to speak against $28,000. This is support that Captain Smith and his officers need. They have one of the toughest areas in the city, and it's really absurd that we wouldn't allow that overtime to protect our streets down in Skid Row. Thank you.
From our against side, we have Becky Dennison, Mike Keyes, and Pete White. Starting with Becky Dennison.
My name is Becky Dennison. I work with the Los Angeles Community Action Network Downtown. I also live in the 77th Division in Councilmember Parks District, and he's not here. But there's been a lot of talk about violent crime downtown, and when I looked online after the Times said that rapes and murders had increased downtown, they've actually decreased over the last three months to only one in the last reporting period. And there's only been 29 of those violent crimes year-to-date. But in my division, where I live, 77th, there's been 102. So I just, I fail to understand why we continue to put police officers into an area that's actually fairly safe in comparison to the rest of the city. And what they do all day is take people's property, move people around, arrest people for milk crate possession, and all this kind of stuff that isn't about crime. And I urge every single one of you, before you vote, to come to our office next week, see video of literally items of comfort, and that's what they're calling them, yanking them out of people's arms as they sit on the street. That's what these police officers are doing.
Thank you. Mike Keyes is our next speaker.
My name is Michael Key. I live in downtown LA. I work for LA CAN, and I oppose more police overtime. According to an LA Times article yesterday, crime is down in the central division. Since I live in the community, I see every day what the police are presently doing, the clearing and the ethnic cleansing of my community. We at LA CAN have over 240 hours of videotapes of what our occupation looks like. The people that are supporting this plan, and that you've heard from, they don't live in my community. What they're protecting is not the people, they're protecting their investments. I've witnessed every day in the last couple of months, and fortunately it has stopped, three strippers standing on the corner of Fifth and Main writing jaywalking tickets while they handcuff people. If former Chief Parks were here, I'm sure he would tell you that that's a significant amount of what they're requesting with the overtime plan.
Our next speaker is Pete White.
The current police campaign against people of color downtown makes driving wild black pale in comparison. This isn't about crime. This is about moving certain people out of the downtown community. It is very clear. We have documented over 234 hours of videotape, clearly illustrating, clearly depicting what is going on downtown. I think we need to figure out what our priorities are for downtown and realize that law enforcement is not the answer. We need to figure out the balance between politics and morality, because right now, the political forces are going to push the City of Los Angeles in a very dangerous place. So you need to reconsider and really think about what overtime means downtown. It means the continued repression and the continued oppression of certain people, and we are not going to stand for it. We're against it.
Thank you for your comments. Some of these were not checked off as general comments. I have Casey Hiran next. Is that for general comments? Or is it on the for or against? I just, okay, so why don't you hold on for one second? We'll put you in the post pile. I just want to be as fair as possible. For general comments, I have somebody who filled out a card that says homelessness, Downtown Women's Center. Is there anybody filled out that card? This is under general comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Elana Williams, and I'm here on behalf of LA CAN and also on behalf of Downtown Women's Center, which is supporting LA CAN, who has also observed the police department brutality toward the people and their personal property. And on Monday, as a personal witness, and also as a homeless person myself, I currently live in emergency housing, and I noticed on Monday how the police did what we are terming a shift-shaff of moving residents from one place to another, from one block to another. They start early on one block and move the people along, and as they pick up their property, that property ends up back around the corner and on that same block shortly thereafter, sir. And I'm just here to state that I feel that that's a waste of taxpayers' money, and also that I myself have improved my homeless condition, but it is not quite over yet. And in the interim, sometimes, sir, even myself, end up on the sidewalk at night. It's very difficult for me to get up and look the way that I look this morning in this temporary homeless transient situation.
Thank you. If any of the following people have a general comment, which is not for against, and I'll mark that as one of the against ones, please come forward of these people. Otherwise, we will try to call on you. But we have Sam Wilson, Amber Wilson, Rory White. Are any of those people just general, or do you have an against position?
General.
Sorry?
General.
It's general, okay. Could you just state your name, please? We have a handheld mic, too, sir. We'll get to you.
My name is Samuel Wilson. This is my wife, Amber.
Hi.
I understand that the police department has to do what they've got to do to a point, but when they set and take my property and break the law and did not even give us notice of three hours, three hours or anything to get our stuff or notify us, and I lost stuff that can never be replaced.
Hold on one second. We'll pause your timer. Will you pause the timer for a moment? Is that on on the board? Try it again.
Yes.
Okay.
Testing.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry, sir. I want to make sure that that's working so everybody can hear you loud and clear. Yeah, why don't we stick with that? My apologies, sir. We'll make sure that's.
No problem. But they came, and they didn't even give us notice, tag, or anything else, and then they didn't even store our property proper. And they tell us we have to get off the streets. Every time that we turn around, and they do this to us, we have to rebuy, like, my tent. I lost stuff that can never be replaced, because money value, there's no money value on what we lost. We lost photographs of my family, my marriage license, my original marriage license was in there, and everything else, my medication, and everything else was in there. I had to go almost 30 days, because they have a strict law out here. If you lose your medication, you don't get it back until your refill date. And my doctor don't want to hear that. And I'm on psych meds, and I try to, when I'm on my meds, I'm okay. I'm not a violent person. I don't go out here and steal. I don't bother anybody or anything else. But we've lost too much stuff and everything.
Thank you, sir. Please, ma'am.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The reason why I'm here is to ask a few, get a few answers to my questions. On September, July, sorry, July 7, 2006, LAPD and the city cleanup crew had decided to pick up all my belongings and my house, granted my house is a tent, but that doesn't matter. And they have decided to take it. I would like to ask them, and I wish I could ask them individually, what happened to it, what they do, what they are going to do to reimburse me or whatever. And you see, my husband and I are legally married in this court of law, and there is not the proper housing for us. They don't want to mess with us because we are couples, and they don't, as you hear, SROs are for single occupancy. There's no married ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Russell Brown, Orlando Ward, and Catherine Lugo. Mr. Brown?
Good morning. I'm Jay Russell Brown. I'm a Historic Corps resident. I'm also chair of the Historic Corps Neighborhood Block Grant, which also includes the president of the Residents Association Downtown LA, which is Historic Corps in Old Bank District, Center City East, and Skid Row.
Sorry about that. Please continue.
Safety, housing stability, social services, and mental health services are vital to all residents, but especially Skid Row residents. None of those services, however, can be accessed when crime, drugs, intimidation are the only voices that are allowed. Homelessness is not a crime. Preying on the homeless, selling drugs, destroying lives of the people there in Skid Row is a crime. A few months ago, Salo Artistic Giving Center, which I'm part of, sponsored an art program in the park across from Midnight Mission. Over 80 kids, aged four from nine, who live on the streets, participated in this program. They're participating in an environment of drugs, filth, no hope, and no way out. Today, we have a choice not to abandon those kids. Please pass this motion.
Orlando Ward is our next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Orlando Ward. I'm director of Public Affairs for the Midnight Mission. And I'm in support of this activity, this allocation. And, you know, I hear a lot of stats, and I study a lot of stats, police stats and other stats. And frankly, you know, my head is spinning from hearing all that. The statistic that makes sense to me is the one that I gather when I walk on Monday morning, and I walk through the streets of Skid Row, and I look for new people out there that perhaps need help. And what I'm seeing is, I'm seeing more fear on our streets, I'm seeing more bruises, more black eyes, more gashes, and what I'm seeing is an increase in the level of violence on our streets. And I don't know if these crimes are reported or not, but I know the people are hurting. And if we can increase the presence of police in this area so that, so that people understand that these people deserve protection, whether they're housed or unhoused, then I support that fully. This is not about statistics, it's about people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Catherine Lugo.
Hello. My name is Catherine Lugo, and I just heard a gentleman earlier say that crime is down. I live in the Arts District. Yesterday, I was meeting my husband in Little Tokyo at 12:00 noon, in Little Tokyo, on Second and San Pedro. I was accosted by a gentleman, I don't know if he was homeless, or if he was just crazy, but if it wasn't for my husband, who was meeting me at the restaurant across the street, I would not be standing here today. I wouldn't be standing here today. I shielded myself by an innocent bystander, who could be any one of you. My husband ran across the street, and he ran across a red light. He could have been hit by a car to come and protect me. I think that there should be more police officers, whatever it takes. A young woman should be able to go to Little Tokyo at 12:00 noon to meet her husband for lunch without the fear of being accosted, harassed, beaten, or raped.
Thank you. We are over the initial 10 minutes. If there's not a motion to extend public hearing, I will read into the record the names of the other folks who put in cards. Casey Hiran, Rory White, Matt Dowd, Mike Golhund, Suma Dog, Steve Diaz, Joseph Thomas, James Jackson, Bilal Ali, Rachel Green, General Dogon, Kay Michael Key, Buchanan, Deborah Buchanan, Joan Watson, Marshall Andre Harry, and Connie Diaz. We're all here, let the record reflect that. And our first speaker will be Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, if I could ask Captain Smith from the Central Division, if he could come up? Oh, there he is. And before I speak, if we could just allow him to give a brief comment on this?
Captain, if you'd like to come to the table.
So if you could hold my time, please, and allow Captain Smith to comment on this motion? Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you today, and thank you for your continued support for the Los Angeles Police Department on behalf of myself, and of course, on behalf of Chief Bratton. We hear a lot of statistics, and, you know, part of my business is statistics, and I just, I have a copy here of our latest crime profile, which I'll provide to the Sergeant-at-Arms so you can all take a look at it. There are some disturbing statistics in central area. Our crime is down 16% year-to-date. Our property crime is down 22% year-to-date. Our violent crime is up 2% year-to-date. Specifically, our sexual assaults or rapes went from 14 to 20, an increase of 43%. The individual that Ms. Gatlin talked about, who captured that woman and kept her in her van, is now in custody, was taken into custody on the 8th by our officers out there. I think you'd agree with me that Skid Row is not yet capable of policing itself. I think what we need in Skid Row are more police officers with the compassion and the understanding that the police officers that I have working there now. My intention, if this funding gets given to us, is to have officers walk footbeats in the most dangerous parts of Skid Row. I'd plan on having a supervisor and four officers walking in harm's way in the most dangerous reporting districts on the streets. Their goal is not to make a large number of arrests, their goal is not to grab the first person they can put in jail for whatever reason and take to jail. The goal these officers have is going to be repression of crime, a visible police presence out there in our most dangerous streets, in our most dangerous time of the day, so that those crimes that are, would have occurred, don't occur. So individuals like that young woman don't get chased by people who are intent on doing them harm. So that's what I'm hoping to do with this money. I do thank you for your support before this, and now, and in the future.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, as you know, in the last week or so, there's been a number of articles in the newspapers about the situation in Skid Row, and I'd like to say, you know, as one of the public speakers say, irrespective of what all the numbers show, we do know that Skid Row is a very dangerous area. And this came about because, as a response to the Central Division's need for more officers. It also came about through a, as a stopgap that we thought would help until in mid-
It also came about through a, as a stopgap that we thought would help, until in mid-September, the possibility of having the mayor and Chief Bratton implement the Safer City Initiative that will provide fifty more officers in the area. Lots of other things are happening right now, as we all know, there's the Ninth Circuit decision that was made, that is in arbit mediation right now, as well as, there's a work group of this council working to find ways to get a new ordinance that will not criminalize the status of being homelessness, but focus on an individual's behavior in any crimes they may commit. But what was certainly clear to me was that there was a need for more officers in this area at this time. You saw some pictures that were presented, you hear about what happens in Skid Row, and I thought it was important to present a stopgap measure with twenty-eight thousand dollars that would allow for overtime in the area. The twenty-eight thousand dollars or so will provide five hundred and forty hours of officer overtime with an emphasis on footbeat patrols, although it is at the discretion of Captain Smith to provide that as he will. The intention of this motion is to be that transitional piece, while we are waiting for the results of the court ordered mediation enforcement guidelines that would give the city more direction about what we can and cannot do with respect to the municipal code, while we are waiting for the new municipal code that is being worked upon by our council members, and while we are waiting for the implementation of the additional public safety measures outlined in the Safer Cities Initiative, something had to be done. I think this is a very small approach to what we can do to reduce crime in the area, and as we all know, this is not going to solve homelessness, it's not going to address the great need in the area, but it is part of an overall plan that the city and all of us have to continue working upon. I actually, as many of you know, voted against appealing the Ninth Circuit Rule of Law, I believe, and I still believe, that we should not criminalize homelessness, but at the same time, I also strongly believe that there is a need for more police officers in that area. We have to differentiate between those who are homeless and truly need the help, and those who are committing crimes in the area. Those who are committing crimes, we should focus on them, get them off the streets, and focus on the people who truly need the help. This is but just a small token to help our officers do their job to get those people off the streets and support the people who truly need the service in that area. I ask for your unanimous support in this, it is money that is being transferred from one of my district accounts to the Central Division to provide the additional overtime. Thank you very much.
Thank you, if I can please, I can please ask the audience, please, to keep order here, Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm pleased that Mr. Weeza is doing this today. Captain Smith, I just wanted to ask you a quick question. As you develop your strategy for using the overtime, can you, or would you also include a thought about, a lot of people make allegations that we're forcing people out of downtown, and while I don't believe that, and while I want to say publicly, you know, as you know, we, I, in the ninth, we have the largest shelter in the city, New Image, and so there is a place for people to go in spite of promulgation of information to the contrary, but what I am concerned about with our inability to do enforcement right now pending, you know, mediation process in the forty-one eighteen lawsuit, what's the thinking in terms of making sure that the issues that we have in Central don't spread into other divisions? Like Newton, for example, so next one over.
Yes ma'am, my goal is always not to displace any homeless persons from the downtown area, what we want to do is remove the drug dealers, and the predators, and the people that come into Central to prey on these folks. I've met with the captains from the other areas and talked about strategies that have worked for us in keeping areas, you know, as crime-free as we possibly can, specifically Newton and Rampart, because my fear, and I think it's a genuine one, is that a lot of individuals that are living in Central now, when there's a lot of police there, are going to move to Newton, or going to move to Rampart, so we're looking at strategies that will allow us to remove that section of population, that portion of the population that's criminal in nature, people that are coming in here to sell drugs, people that are coming in here to, you know, commit sexual assaults like this individual, and, you know, hopefully, by removing them, it'll allow more people to get into recovery, more people to get into the empty shelter beds that there are. In fact, last night, we did a call around again, there were ninety-three female beds empty in downtown, and fifty-five male beds empty in downtown, so I sure hope that those beds get filled up by the folks that are still out on the streets once we get started.
Great, thank you.
Any other council members that wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, let's open the roll on this item, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number eighteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, number eighteen?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would just ask that, on this item, if we can continue it to the first meeting that we return from recess, it gives an opportunity both the CLA and the CAO to look at the RFP, we have the report from the committee, we also have the department report, but we do not have, or have not had a hands-on analysis of the RFP itself, and want to make sure it's expansive and it's covering the entire RSO statute. Many of us remember that when the RSO went in, there was supposed to be a valuation at some point, and we never got to that, and we want to make sure this RFP covers all those issues, so if we can reschedule it to the first meeting upon returning, and then-
It's obviously very important, we want to make sure we do it right, so-
Thank you.
No objection to that, we will continue till the first meeting after the council recess.
And we can make sure that the CLA and the CAO meets with CD ten and CD eight?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We will ensure that happens.
And that is September twelfth.
That will be continued to September twelfth, without objection. Next item, please.
Next item is item number nineteen, called special by Mr. Cardenas, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas, we have item number nineteen. Okay, let's hold that on the desk for a second, let's go to the next item.
Next item's item, item twenty-seven, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl, I believe, for Mr. Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith, we have number twenty-seven, did you, it's on the Jessica's Law?
Well, I don't think I need to explain it much, everybody around here knows what it's all about, the governor came out yesterday and supported it, Lee Baca supported it, the Democratic nominee supported it, the political consensus says this is something we need to protect our children and our communities from sexual predators, and I just urge your support. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for calling for me.
Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard on this one? Not, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, next item, please.
Item number forty-seven, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item forty-seven is now before us, I'd like to ask Michael Hunt to come forward. Is Michael Hunt here? Once, Mr. Hunt? And then Mr. Dowd, and Mr. Dog.
Yeah, money for the kids, sixty-five hundred dollars, can I get a motion instead of thirty-five hundred on that one? That's a good thing, declaring Kids' Day at the park or whatever, that's a good thing. All right, Mr. Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Yep, this is a great item, Tenth Annual KTLA Kids' Day LA, just want to give a shout out to the morning show, Mark Krisky, Sam Rubin for acknowledging the Outlaws, ZD, thank you.
Mr. Dog?
Excuse me, they're giving out free food out there for some ceremony, I snuck in, but I'd like to talk about this, because this is KTLA Kids' Day, now KTLA, excuse me, KTLA is a commercial television station, okay, they're getting such a bonanza of publicity. By the way, I like KTLA, they mentioned Suma Dog on the morning show with Sam Rubin, so I'm all for KTLA, I'm for the kids, and that is a very special event, but we got to get away from the city paying for this, I think KTLA should pick up the bill themselves, because the mayor had a town hall meeting where we absorbed the cost and paid for the mayor's town hall meeting, and then he closed it to the public and wouldn't let people come and speak, so for a lot of these things, if we're paying for it, first of all, if the mayor's going to take money for these things, for a town hall meeting where he's inviting the community, they shouldn't be told it's a private event, we need to be more mindful of who's paying for these things, so I say KTLA, let's approve this event, but don't absorb the cost, it's KTLA, they're making millions and millions of dollars, man, let them pay for it.
Melrose Larry Green, please come forward on this? Okay, I thought so, okay, just want to make sure, we'll call you when we get to that, that is the end of public comment, anybody wishing to be heard from the council on this? If not, let's please open the roll, Madam Clerk, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, next item, please.
Mr. President, I believe on item number nineteen, Mr. Cardenas's questions were answered, and there is the amending motion before council.
Okay, anybody wishing to call, I mean, to be heard on nineteen, as amended, we will consider it otherwise, please open the roll, on nineteen, as amended, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved as well, next item.
Number fifty-two, called special for cards from the public.
Starting with Melrose Larry Green.
Good afternoon, you know, for some people, these meetings are an opportunity for self-promotion, and you folks really deserve this recess you're having, really, and I, by the way, I read about what you're doing, Eric, and I commend you, having met Lieutenant Pantano last night, I really commend you for your service in Florida, and hopefully it'll toughen you up even more, so when you get back, you'll be, I always told you, you should do what you're doing, so congratulations on your career path, but I don't have a lot of time. I knew Miguel Contreras, a lot of you don't know this, a lot of you don't know about Melrose Larry Green, but in my liberal, earlier, younger days, I was young as you, Mr. President, I knew Miguel Contreras, he was a wonderful guy, we lost him unfortunately a couple of years ago, he was a wonderful labor union leader in Los Angeles, I knew him, and he was a wonderful, wonderful, he was very, very nice to me, and I miss him tremendously, and the idea of a learning center, Miguel Contreras Learning Complex, on September fifteenth, which would have been my father's ninety-fourth birthday if he was still alive, it's a wonderful thing, and I really do support this, and I commend those that brought this motion in, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Hunt is our next speaker? Mr. Hunt here? Not, Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Mr. President, my name's Matt Dowd, I am a candidate for the Venice Neighborhood Council, I'm joining in the politics of the city so I can actually do something, so as far as my self-promotion is concerned, it's all towards a good cause.
I know that was raised by a previous speaker, but if you could please address Miguel Contreras Learning Center?
Okay, yeah, this is something I'm all in favor of, I expect a unanimous vote. Sometimes when the community is polarized on issues, we also see a unanimous vote, which is a little alarming, but on this one, I think we're all together, it's going to be unanimous yes, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
And Mr. President, that was Mr. Dowd's sixth item that he has spoken on.
Okay. Mr. Weeza is our next speaker, Mr. Weeza.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to stand and mention that this is going to be a wonderful school, and I want to congratulate the school district for the work it's done to bring this school about. I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but the school is actually right near Third and Bixwell, across the street from the Chamber of Commerce, and this school is actually an alternative, it came about because it was an alternative to the students who would otherwise go to the Belmont Learning Complex, who at that time, the board had decided to stop because of the environmental concerns, but when we got on, when I got on the board, we decided to go forward with the Belmont Learning Complex, fix the environmental issues, and continue with this school itself. It's going to have a great curriculum, and I'm really thrilled to have it named after a great labor leader, who interestingly enough, the, I don't know if you call it the irony, but it'd be right across the street from the chamber, and we'll have the name of a great leader right across the street, and I can't be there that day, will be out of town, but I certainly hope that whoever is around you could go and attend the ceremony for what would be one of the few comprehensive high schools to open up in the last three decades, and it's going to be a wonderful school for an area that's considered one of the most overcrowded area for high schools in the school district, so again, I want to thank Councilmember Reyes as well, who was there with me when I was on the school board, fighting to make sure that this school was built, and the kids from Belmont High School and the surrounding community are going to have a great new shining high school to attend in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weeza, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. Weeza, for his leadership in putting this together historically to begin with, nothing better than a learning institute, an opportunity for people to really develop themselves, but to do it in the name of Miguel Contreras adds the icing on the cake. Here is a person that made a huge difference with his life in all of our lives, we miss him terribly, it's just been a year ago that he passed on, a little over a year, and it's a fitting tribute to him, where young people get a chance to really learn the skills they need to learn, he was a great leader in America, a tremendous loss, but we have Maria Elena de Rasa out there right now, moving forward, carrying the flag, not only in her husband's name, for all men and women, all working men and women, so this is a beautiful moment, and God bless Miguel Contreras.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, and I too concur with those words, and as somebody who, whose students will be served, thank you, Mr. Weeza, for your work on that as well. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, next item, please.
Item number fifty-seven, called special for cards from the public.
We have Sharon Brewer on items fifty-seven and fifty-eight, if there's no objection, colleagues, we'll take fifty-seven and fifty-eight up together and go out to Van Nuys, and Ms. Brewer, if you'd like to have two minutes, one for each one, we'd be happy to hear from you now on both of those issues. Do we have any word whether Ms. Brewer is still in Van Nuys? We'll wait for Information Technology Agency to let us know. Okay, we've been informed that she is not in Van Nuys anymore, so we will open and close the public hearing on items fifty-seven and fifty-eight. We know it's a long agenda today, it's the last day before recess, so we have quite a few items, so thanks to everybody for bearing with us, that is now before us, both of those items, if we can take them up together, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, next item, please.
Item number sixty, Mr. President, I believe, does not have a card on it, so if council wishes to take that up-
We do not see a card, and so I will open and close the public hearing on sixty, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, next item, please.
Item number sixty-four, called special for cards from the public.
Melrose Larry Green, on item number sixty-four and sixty-six, please, if we can take those up together, if there's no objection, two minutes, please.
Now you know what it feels like to have somebody, you know, throw this in for your vacation, you guys can't hold a candle to me, don't even try to, you'll never be as famous as Melrose Larry Green, not that I ever wanted to be famous, come on, come on, quiet, quiet, you're out, it's not even worth saying you're out of order, you're out of order.
Address the issues on sixty-four and sixty-
Anyway, item sixty-four is relative to declaring the outpost estate summer block party a special event. Well, I was reading the Hollywood Independent the other day, and I saw this great story about Runyon Canyon, and about the Huntington Hartford Estate, and about how there's some metal rods down there that were from a sign, a neon sign of outpost estates, so I definitely do support item sixty-four, in terms of bringing history back, and Tony LeBonge, you know more about LA than I know about LA, in fact, nobody can compare with your knowledge, but we'll talk again about that. And item sixty-six is the El Sereno Labor Day Weekend Street Concert Fair, I will be there, it's a great part of Los Angeles, it's just as much a part of LA as Hancock Park is, and I'll be in El Sereno, and I support that Labor Day Fair, September second and fourth. Hasta la vista, pasión esta, muy fin de semana, amistad compañeros latinoamericanos, yo no hablo español como tú, Tony, pero yo puedo hablar, hasta la vista.
Thank you very much, closes public comment on sixty-four and sixty-six, if we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are both approved. Next item, please.
Item number sixty-eight, called special for cards from the public.
To see one card, and the City Attorney has informed us that we've reached the six-minute limit with that speaker, so we will see, both, I've been informed, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
The admonition was six items.
Okay. Have, I think you probably had about twenty seconds left, there was one time you walked away, so if you'd like to take twenty seconds on this one, go ahead.
Is there some kind of formal way you're counting this, because I need a stopwatch, because some of my items, I've only spoke ten, fifteen, twenty seconds, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, if I could just jump in there-
Sure. Sure.
They were admonished to speak on, at a maximum, of six items. We cannot keep time less than a minute.
All right, we'll do that. But why don't you speak on this, and then just going forward, we'll use that, so we know that the rules are, okay?
Okay. As long as, you know, you know that the rules are. So I just want to mention that I'm in the Argonaut. They're quoting me this week.
If you could please keep to the celebration at hand, the two-hundred-and-twentieth birthday.
Yeah, this is just a credential. I'm running for Venice Neighborhood Council. I'm a political candidate now, so I'm just announcing that. And you can read all about my platforms on the Matt Dowd Show.
All right, that's a last warning. So we're out of order.
Okay. I'm all in favor of this item. Let's get a unanimous vote, and it's an expensive one, but you only turn two-hundred-and-twenty-five once.
Thank you. That closes our public comment. Mr. Cartness, do you want to be heard on this?
Not on this.
Okay. If we can open the roll on item sixty-eight, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
I want to make an announcement. No committee.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Cartness, for announcement?
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. I'd just like to announce that we had scheduled at one o'clock the Ad Hoc Committee on Public Finance, and due to the length of the council, we will postpone that for another day.
Okay. Next item, please.
Seventy-one, call special by Councilmember Parks.
All right. Mr. Parks, we have item number seventy-one before us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask for public support for homicide that occurred in the Eighth District and Seventy-seventh Division on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and six. Tadja Jones was found deceased inside of her parked vehicle. The victim was... She was a victim of multiple gunshot wounds. She was last seen at her work location at 2:00 P.M. on Thursday, April twentieth. She was subsequently reported missing on Friday, April twenty-first. After thorough and exhaustive investigation, LAPD detectives have been unable to identify the suspects. At this time, believe that there's no new information developed without community assistance. Anyone with information is urged to call LAPD Seventy-seventh Detectives. Homicide detectives at two-one-three-four-eight-five-one-three-eight-three, and that's a $50,000 reward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Any other council members wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Seventy-two, call special four cards from the public.
Zuma Dogg on number seventy-two, please.
How much more time do I have left? Because I want to make sure I comment on special item twelve, Mr. City Attorney, before I start. Since you've extinguished it, it's not just the time, but the number...
I have you down on five items. This would be the sixth one here.
Are you going to call number twelve special? The ballot initiative thing, I want to save it for that.
Okay. Well, if you would have... If you want to split your time between the two, go ahead.
All right. Well, I'd like to... I'll keep this short. This is for neighborhood council street signs. What they want to do is identify and have banners for the neighborhood council. This is very important, because I've heard from the constituents that the council members themselves really have a hard time finding these neighborhood council meetings. They're not being heard. They're not taking public comment. This is hurting for things like LAUSD for public input. So please, this is a nice reminder. They want to put up signs at the neighborhood councils, and that's what it's about. Please, visit those neighborhood councils as well, council members, because your constituents want to talk to you. Zuma Dogg, I will answer you as Los Angeles City Council.
Thank you. That is our public comment for this one. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item seventy-seven, call special four cards from the public.
Okay. Mr. Hunt, if you'd like to come forward. Michael Hunt here?
Oh, I'll be right here.
We need you now, or else we'll pass on this one, sir. Time for public comment is right now.
What's up to Roy Edwards? Good luck, and to City Council, you guys have a nice two weeks, and I'll see you back in two and two. Mr. Garcetti, if you get a chance, I need to talk to you over here.
See, I know Mr. Dowd has already passed his six minutes, so we'll put that for the record.
He said he's looking at item number twelve.
This is for Mr. Dowd. Item number seventy-seven is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item. Item seventy-nine, call special four cards from the public, and also Mr. LeBonde, call this item special. Mr. LeBonde, you want to go first?
Thank you. Yeah, just to tell everybody, people, especially our city departments, how important this event is, and how hard the people are working in the mayor's office and Mr. Weezer's office to make it a great celebration of Las Pablo Doras on the two-hundred-and-twentieth anniversary, and make sure we do celebrate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. I'd like to call the following speakers. Melrose Larry Green, Samuel Sanchez, followed by Candido Mares.
Those are three excellent speakers, if I may say so myself. I really enjoy Samuel Sanchez. He reminds me of young Melrose Larry Green. And I enjoy Candido. But let me tell you, this two-hundred-and-twentieth birthday of Los Angeles is very critical. A year ago, I went on the hike with Mayor Vieragosa. We hiked from... And the Council General of Mexico. We hiked from San Gabriel Mission to downtown L.A. I hope we're doing it again this year. I know I'll be there, and I hope you'll be there, Councilman LeBonde. It's only nine miles. It's a great way to talk to the mayor. I'm sure he'll appreciate this. And especially those of you that are into anniversaries, two-hundred-and-twenty-five is a lot of years. I've only been here twenty-six years. So L.A. was one-hundred-and-ninety-nine years when I came to Los Angeles. But I consider this to be my home now. So I join in wishing the City of Los Angeles a happy two-hundred-and-twentieth birthday. And everybody go on that hike whenever it is, but, you know, check your local listings on the website for details. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to start with the story of when I was on the Blue Line going south. There was a young child... This is related to two-hundred-and-twentieth birthday. There was a young child trying to take a picture of something. Her mom, after a few minutes, told her, "Put the camera away. You're not taking a picture of anything." And she says, "I'm waiting. I'm waiting to see something to take a picture." And I handed her a flyer about the farm, about the South Central Farm. And this may have been the last open green space that she would have seen riding along the Blue Line. And I pointed it out to her and what the city did to it. If you go to the history page... And I did turn in a card on sixty-eight. It wasn't called. It's marked on that same public speaker card. If you go to the history page at the lacity.org website, and you go to the history page for the two-hundred-and-twentieth anniversary of the L.A. city, it sounds like a conquistador's dream. It talks about colonizing and glorifying the colonization of indigenous peoples. It only mentions the missions...
Mr. Sanchez, we did an error. I think Mr. Garcetti did not see that it said sixty-eight and seventy-nine. Would you like to have... This would be part of your six minutes, if you want to have an additional minute for the item sixty-eight.
Yes, please. And so I would advise you to please look at the history link on the two-hundred-and-twentieth birthday celebration of L.A. on the city... Lacity.org website, and you'll see it's glorifying the conquest of indigenous people. It's glorifying the destruction of open spaces like that, that the little girl on the Blue Line was looking so hard to take a picture of something. I don't know what she was looking for, but she was looking for something. It was all gray. Jan Perry's vision of graying L.A. is not working. And there was also, in this history web... History link on the page, no reference to the beauty that was here before, the conquest and the missions and the military settlements and the pueblos to feed the military. In conclusion, like I said, that may have been the last open space that she saw off the Blue Line for... Until these buildings start falling down. Thank you.
Thank you. Candido? Candido? It's not here. Madam Clerk, we've closed public comment. If you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item? Item number eighty, call special four cards from the public. Yes, and Mr. LeBonde also called it special, and Melrose Larry Green is our speaker. I'll ask Deanna as to the six minutes...
This is his sixth item.
This is my last one. Don't even try to compete with me, guys. I know the rules. I helped write some of these rules, okay? Time is running, and don't worry, I can manage time better than you can manage your free food. Anyway, number eighty is designating the first Friday of each month, emergency drills. And I was at Tom LeBonde's press conference over at the fire station on Coenga. We talked about this one or two Fridays ago. It's very important. I don't care how you feel about the war in Iraq. I don't care how you feel about George Bush. We're at a war right now. We're going to get hit one day soon, and we got to be ready in this city. And what Tom LeBonde is talking about, designating the first Friday for emergency drills, will save lives in the City of Los Angeles. Once again, enjoy your vacation. All of you totally deserve it. Okay? I mean this from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. LeBonde. I apologize. Mr. LeBonde?
No, just, members, I just want to drive the point home. We did have a press conference. Lucy Jones was there from the United States Geological Survey, from Caltech. It's one-hundred-and-fifty years since San Andreas had a very major incident. We will have another earthquake. Hopefully, we won't have, but there's a potential we could have some other man-made challenge. And we must be prepared. And the first Friday of the month, historically, was what we did when we grew up in Los Angeles. And we should try to do that again, and also get people involved with the CERT teams, so they could help out. That's the Community Emergency Response Teams, which I know Councilman Hal Burnson was so involved, along with then-Sister Chief Frank Board, in developing. I just wanted to call to your attention, hope your offices get involved. We're getting involved. Thank you. Ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. My apologies. Now, Madam Clerk, if we could, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. LeBonde, for your leadership on that. The next item is item eighty-six. And that was called special four cards. Joyce Stiller, please.
I'm talking on a final track map that is occurring in Lincoln Heights, near the Gold Line. It's one of the first developments near a gold line. But they haven't fulfilled all their recommendations. The track file was not in city planning. The only information is in the council file, and they have requests from the advisory way back in 'oh-four to fulfill building and safety commitments, Department of Transportation, Fire Department, city planning, more city planning, and stormwater. Yet none of these have been fulfilled. All you have is a Quimby fee and another filing fee. Now, if we're to keep things straight in Los Angeles with development and not cause future problems, I would ask that you honor what was done by the determination and have those fulfilled before any final track map is enclosed. So I would like to have this sent back and have a report where everything has been fulfilled that was requested of them. Otherwise, why even have a city planning department? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiller. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item. Eighty-seven, call special four cards from the public. Yes, we do have several cards, and I see them coming up. Thank you. I think there are six speakers here. So Mary Benson, followed by Martin St. John, Robert Hovis, Amanda St. John, Rachel Williams, Jeanette Bond, and then Keston Wright is here but not speaking. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Mary Benson, and I'm a third-generation resident of this area where this tract is before you. If I knew then what I know now, and older and wiser, saying that recognize the value of life experience, I'm here today to ask the council members seated on this council to consider acting on the basis of another saying, and that's better late than never. I originally appealed this subdivision because it was in violation of the non-motorized transportation element in the community plan. What I know now was, is that the applicant admitted disclosure of far more serious site conditions. What I remember is that in 1971, the six-story Picoima Memorial Hospital, less than three blocks away, was destroyed by the earthquake. What I remember is that in 1978, the Lopez landfill breached its bank in heavy rains and spilled into the land. I'm here to ask that this file does not enclose an engineering report for gas migration or the earthquake fault location.
We just need to conclude, Mary.
Yeah. I ask that you continue this or set it back, so that the engineering report that's included in the file can include these considerations.
Thank you. Martin St. John?
Councilmembers, thank you. I want to point out one important thing in all of this. I won't go through everything that I wanted to address, but an incorrect MND declaration on the adjacent property, actually, this project's twin, right next door, resulted in the City Planning Commission's decision that the project-proposed environmental clearance, of course pursuant to SEQA, was inadequate. And at that point, the commission disapproved the project plan and recommended a full EIR. And again, this is on the very project right next door. What we ask is that you oppose this project. We do not oppose development, but we believe it should be done with full disclosure and mitigation of existing hazards to make it safe for the public and the community. And as we all know, that's your responsibility, first and foremost, is for public safety. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. St. John. Robert Hovis?
Yes, I'm Robert Hovis, and I live right across the street from the project he was just talking about. The other project that's coming up is adjacent, and I was there when the land... The excavator came in and filled up the trench that they were looking for the fault. And he told me at that time that the fault run in the tree line, and that I'm thinking that if it runs through there, it's got to run through the other property also. And I also go for an environmental study on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hovis. Amanda St. John?
Good morning, councilwoman. Afternoon. I know we're all ready to go out and start your break. I want you to get out here, too. We've been here a long time. We cannot, in Los Angeles, build on earthquake fault lines. This property is directly on an earthquake fault line. You will see it on the second last page. It is a map out of the seismic charts of the City of L.A. We cannot afford a disaster. I just came back from New Orleans, where we've done search and rescue and search and recovery. Our homes is right next to this. If there's an earthquake on a house that's built right on top of a fault line, we're going to be pulling bodies out of there. This is a major... This is a major liability for the city. Please, if we could continue this, we can get this in front of the planning department and in front of the city engineers, so we see what they can do. I know you don't want to interfere with other councilman's districts, but this is very serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. John. Rachel Williams?
Yes. I've been a resident for 22 years in Lakeview Terrace, and I oppose the building of the Terra Vista Way homes. My concern at this time are the traffic, the noise, an area for the gangs to hang out, the racing of cars up and down. And because the homes are going to be built flush with the hills, it's a fire hazard. Now, these items were brought to the city council and turned down on the adjacent project, and this was in June of '06. My biggest worry, and the city councils also should be, that the land, like my, is on earthquake fault line. In front of our houses, which is in front of the homes that are going to be built, we already have cracks in the street. The building of these homes would truly be a safety hazard now and in the future. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Bond?
Good afternoon. I am opposed to Item 87, the development of homes on Track 54004, because there is an extensive fault line, which was exposed through trenching by the developer. Our community and the public are unaware of this fault line. Homes must be built 150 feet from a fault. This proposed development of homes would be on top of this fault. This is a major safety issue for the people who will be living there and to our community. And I'm also concerned of the fire and flooding concerns, because these homes will be built very close to the mountains where the National Forest starts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public comment period is closed. Mr. Rosendahl?
I'm the planning department here. Actually, it would be the engineering. Anybody from engineering? Anybody who can comment on this? If I could make a brief comment, that the Office of the Engineer has noted in their report that the conditions of approval for the track map have been fulfilled. And pursuant to the Subdivision Map Act, today's action by council is ministerial. Basically, it has to approve it. It's the final action. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Any other items on our regular agenda?
No, Madam President. That's all for the regular agenda, and then the other items called special are all from the special meeting.
Thank you. And I know Item 8 is mine, so I will speak a moment while Ms. Perry takes the chair.
Thank you. And I will be brief at the late hour. Colleagues, we have before us today a motion that asks for some legislation that would allow us to address the issue of ski mask robberies that we're seeing a proliferation in the San Fernando Valley. So far in the valley, there have been more than 1,600 robberies, a 15% increase over the last year, and a huge spike of the number of robberies perpetrated by intruders wearing masks, up almost 50% over last year. Robberies conducted by masked perpetrators present a number of challenges. First, and most importantly, they're difficult to identify and apprehend, even if the victimized location has actual security cameras. Also, masked robbers are more likely sometimes to be violent with their identities being concealed. This is something fully supported by the Los Angeles Police Department. Deputy Chief Moore has been very active on this. This adds, again, some additional, we feel, disincentives to using a mask and also a way in which we can educate the public. So I would ask for an I-vote today on this item. Thank you very much. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Ms. Grule. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker. All right, let's clear Mr. Rosendahl off the boards, please. Thank you. There are no further speakers in the queue. Ms. Grule, do you want to add anything?
Nope. I just asked for an I-vote.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll. Close the roll. There's already been a public hearing on that issue. So open the roll, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Thank you. Next item, Madam President, Item Number Nine, called special by Councilmember Wesson, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the councilmembers.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Wesson on this item.
Yes, Madam President. Members, this is a technical amendment that indicates that the instructions from the controllers should be added. It's my understanding. And move the budget and finance report.
Okay. We do have a number of speakers, I believe, on this item, but there's been public comment? Is anyone asking for there to be further public comment on this? Mr. Weisar, did you want to comment?
Yeah, so they're public speakers, though? I'll wait till after the speaker.
Well, you'd have to ask for a public hearing. Right now, there's been a public hearing in committee.
Sure. How many people are here?
I believe there's about seven.
If we could ask, you know, at least some of them to speak, I think if there's that much interest by the public, I would like to hear from some of them. That's okay?
Yes, unless there is anyone who does not want to, we will go ahead and hear public comment, and then we'll hear from Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Weisar, and Ms. Perry. We call the following speakers. Eli Weitzer, Mitch Kamen, Omar Leon. Those will be our first three speakers.
Okay, if I go first?
Yes, please.
I appreciate it. I'm Mitch Kamen, Executive Director of Betzettic Legal Services. I'm proud to be here with directors from Jewish Family Services, from Neighborhood Legal Services, and from the multipurpose senior centers. Together, we serve thousands of low-income families and seniors, and we rely upon these CDBG funds to do so. We're grateful that the council has crafted a proposal that would ensure some funding for this contract year, but we have some concerns with the proposal as currently drafted. First, we would hope that there would be 12 full months of funding for these programs. We're in month five of a 12-month contract at this time, and we have clients and staff who are depending upon us maintaining these programs. Secondly, the 30 days currently provided for certification as CBDOs is totally inadequate, given the structural and corporate changes and board involvement that's necessary to comply with the regulations as interpreted by the city at this time. And finally, we would hope that the city would be amenable to providing technical support as we seek to comply with these requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kamen. Eli?
Thank you. My name is Eli Weitzer. I'm with Jewish Family Service. We receive CDBG funding for some senior services, as well as services from our homeless shelter at Gramercy Place. The gist of the issue, as you probably are aware, is there's a change in interpretation to qualify as a CBDO. The previous interpretation allowed for an advisory board for the program that was specifically funded to be locally neighborhood-based. And now the interpretation is that the board of the entire agency needs to be 51% within the neighborhood that the services are given to. The problem that presents for community-wide or for city-wide providers is that we really can't be both a neighborhood-based provider as well as a community-wide provider. And so I would urge that recognizing that, and that the community-wide providers are an important piece of the service network throughout the city, that the city look at ways of funding these services, if not through CDBG, through other funding sources, so that there's not an interruption in the services, and that the provider community can maintain its ability to provide services throughout the city.
Thank you very much. Omar Leon, and we followed by Harriet Edwards and Neil Dudavich.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Omar Leon, and I'm with IDEPSCA, which is the Institute of Popular Education of Southern California. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for your leadership in helping all the organizations affected by the certification of the community-based organization. But also, I would like to inform you that after several meetings with CDD and other city departments, it is very certain that IDEPSCA will not qualify for the certification as a community-based organization, for which the day labor program in your districts will be directly affected. IDEPSCA has been administering the day labor program for 17 years. That was when the Harvard City Day Labor Center was open. We've been very successful administering the program, and we provide many services for the community. I'll urge you, the members of this council, to help us find other sources of funding, because this program is very vital for the day labors and household workers.
Thank you. We just asked you to conclude. Sorry. Thank you very much. Harriet Edwards?
Harriet Edwards, Executive Director of Delta Sigma Theta Life Development in the West Adams District. I just wanted to reiterate what has already been said and bring it down just one level. You're impacting two parts of our community. You're not only impacting the seniors that receive the ADSC funding, but you're also impacting the caregivers who are caring for those people, who are trying to maintain a job while they're caring for their loved ones. To date, our agencies have received no ADSC funding from any sources. So we're operating now April, May, June, July, and August with no funding, trying to keep those budgets going. I would reiterate the fact that we do need more time if we're going to change our board composition and be able to comply with the regulations. We're going to need between 60 and 90 days at best, guess. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Neil, are both you and Yvonne, are you speaking for both of you?
No, she's going to also speak. That's okay. I'm Neil Dudavich. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County. We serve the San Fernando Valley area, as most of you know. We also have about $1.5 million in grants for the CDD that are at stake and are subject to these rules. I heartily want to endorse Mitch Kamen's recommendations to you. You need to ensure 12-month funding. You need to give people the time to try to comply with this. This is not a simple, we don't just fill out a piece of paper and sign it. There's a lot of work to be done. And thirdly, I want to really let you know that it's our judgment, we are going to do our best to comply, because we think it's in everyone's interest, but it's our judgment that, in fact, this is not the best way for the city to ensure that these funds will be able to be spent consistent with HUD requirements. We've looked at the rules, and we're very concerned that the plan currently will not pass muster with HUD. So we urge you to require the city officials to let us be involved in the process.
Thank you. Yvonne? Yvonne will be followed by Michelle Dean, Cambria Smith.
Good afternoon. I'm Yvonne Maria Jimenez, Deputy Director with Neighborhood Legal Services of Valley County. The Budget and Finance Committee report today recommends that there be the preparation and presentation of a policy related to the funding and certification of CBDOs. And on behalf of the FDNs, in particular in the valley, I respectfully request that these agencies be given meaningful participation in that process. We do not request that it be as a formal process as part of drafting that rule, but that we be given the opportunity to have participation in the discussion with the CDD, CLE's office, City Attorney's Office, with regard. As Mr. Dudavich says, we have reviewed the rules, we have worked with HUD, and we feel there are better ways to approach and draft a policy that makes sense for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Yvonne. Cambria?
Good afternoon. I'm Cambria Smith, President of Valley Interfaith Council, and I'd just like to reiterate what the other speakers have said, namely, that the council work with us to give us extra time to meet the HUD requirements so that we can be CBDO certified, and also that you work with us to make sure that funding is consistently given to us over the next few months as we work through this, so we can continue to provide the services. In our case, that's four adult day support centers and about 100 frail elderly adults, and their caregivers that would be impacted if we have to see services. So I really ask for your consideration in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Dean? Michelle Dean? If not, that closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And let me first thank my colleagues, Councilmember Wesson and Councilmember Parks, without whom we would have had a worse situation here than we did today. And both of them, I know, are committed to the very groups that we've heard from today, who have been very patient here during a very long meeting just before the recess, but the groups who really provide the lifeline for so many Angelinos, to their basic services, to the basic social needs and goods that they deserve and should have, and that we have too little money to provide in the city as it is. And Mr. Wesson in the Housing Community Economic Development Committee, Mr. Parks in the Budget Committee have made very clear, and this council has spoken very clearly, and I want to reiterate here on the record in this public forum again, that the intention of this council, while this takes us through September, is in September to be presented with options to make sure that we get through March and make that a full year of funding, because there have been programs, there have been organizations. But forget the programs and the organizations for a second. There are the people who are expecting that to be there. And it's the difference between whether we have more people becoming homeless, it's the difference between whether we have people who have hopes to get the job skills they need, it's the difference between whether or not we stabilize some of our communities with the childcare, whether the domestic violence programs, and other critical links to a better city that these groups provide, and we must have that there in place. In particular with the domestic violence, Mr. Wesson also played a very important role in ensuring that our domestic violence network, which is really an emergency network as well as a preventative one, was not left out in the cold, and that we didn't have families who are the victims and survivors of domestic violence left out there without any options, which we've said many times around this horseshoe, is something that saves us long-term money, if you just look at it even in cold-dollar terms. I think all of this network is something that does the preventative work that if they don't do, we pay much for later on. The problem is, for too long, colleagues, we've just depended on a federal government which is slowly winnowing these dollars away and sometimes making the definitions of what qualifies more and more narrow. We implore HUD, which has been a great partner to us in so many different things here, to be a partner that works with us to figure out how we can keep this network, because it's not about the rules, although we have to abide by them, and we do, it is about what the social good that these programs do. And so if there are certain ways, and we have a certain network, which they acknowledge and have funded through all these years, do good, help us continue to do that good and work with us. And to our leaders in Washington, prioritize our communities. Do not ignore Los Angeles. Do not ignore the poor. Do not ignore the disabled. Do not ignore those who are neediest, because the message we get loud and clear every single year is for us to fight with each other here over a smaller and smaller pot, over an amount of money that fewer and fewer people can qualify for. And that is exactly what the intention is, for us to be distracted from the dollars actually shrinking from there, and instead to turn against each other here. But know that whether it is this city, and I will say this last thing, colleagues, because the time has just gone over, I would say to all of us, while we have depended on the past for federal funding for these things, if this is a priority, we have our own dollars. And each year during the budget, we may have to get to a point where we have to evaluate whether or not this is high enough priority for us to look at dollars that aren't just grant dollars given to us, but are part of our city's general fund, because the people who pay taxes in, from the richest to the poorest in the city, demand that we have the sort of leadership that will make sure these problems don't become more and more expensive each year, and that we get a city that has less and less justice as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Weisar, followed by Ms. Perry, Mr. Smith, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. Is there someone from CDD here that could answer some questions, please? And please hold my time. When did CDD learn about the need for reclassification? Hold my time, please.
Okay. I'm Sharon Morris with CDD. We began talking to HUD about the way that we had been classifying CBDOs last fall. And it was last November that we began to ask them questions and negotiate how we would define CBDOs, whether or not we could use, as one of the speakers said, 51% of the board needs to come from the area and represent low-mod individuals. We were exploring with HUD, you know, if we could use advisory committees, how large do geographic areas have to go? And so we've been working on this issue for quite some time.
When were the organizations notified about the possibility having to be reclassified? Hold my time, please.
They were notified during the consolidated plan adoption process, you know, when the plan was adopted and we sought permission from the mayor and council to do the contracts. We made it clear that we were still waiting for some answers from HUD.
And when was the consolidated plan?
It was adopted in March of this year.
So there was a significant time period there between the time that we learned about it and we are negotiating with HUD, that we went to the organizations. And I think something like significant as this, we probably should have been a bit more alert to tell them about the possibility of this happening, because to restructure their bylaws, to create a subsidiary, that all takes time. So I think we, in the future, should probably notify these organizations with enough time for them to have to do this. Now, the organizations are facing a 30- or 60-day period in which we're asking them to hurry up and do something which they possibly could have done months ago. I'm a bit concerned about this, because here we are, they're depending on us under our rules and guidelines and funding to provide a service. And I think we could have been a bit more helpful to them in getting through this and not giving them that 30- to 60-day time period to come back and change bylaws, meet with their board, possibly do an emergency meeting, create subsidiaries. All that takes time. So I'm a bit concerned about how we approach this, and I think it's not fair either for the organizations or for the people who are going to ultimately receive the service. Why did we go with a six-month funding as opposed to 12-month? Why can't we do a 12-month? Hold my time, please.
Okay. Well, ultimately, I hope we will be able to do a 12-month. Our intention back in March was to contract with these agencies for the full 12 months and to bring them into compliance during that period. As we were going through that contracting process, we got held up when discussions began around, well, would it be appropriate for them to use the grant funds now until we know that they're going to comply? And that's when we stopped the contracting process and started looking for the alternative funding to move forward. So to date, we have found alternative funding. That's what we're asking you to... So, to date, we have found alternative funding, that's what we're asking you to approve today. It's a combination of UDAG and general fund dollars to get them for the first six months. We will be coming back within a few weeks with recommendations on how to fund those agencies that are unable to comply with the CBDO status for the balance of the six months. Those that do comply, the block grant money is there for them. For those that are unable to comply, we have to, again, identify alternative sources of funding.
Instead of waiting 30 to 60 days for them to do this, can't we do, why can't we do 12 months? And go down the same path of trying to identify funds for the 12 months? And today say, hey, we're going to do the 12 months?
Well, it's my understanding that we have to have the dollars in place before we can actually sign those contracts.
And we have the six months in place today?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you think it's 30 to 60 days for them to figure out if they're, for them to change their bylaws, possibly create? There's a lot of work involved in that. Is that sufficient time for them to do what they have to do?
No, we actually had recommended that they have an additional 30 days, a total of 90 days to come into compliance. But that got amended in Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay. Is there any danger with us going 90 days? What's the danger? Anybody? I was in Budget and Finance, I missed that part of the meeting, but what's the danger there during 90 days?
I think there was just a desire to move people along faster. They're not just learning this week that there's a problem. We have held workshops with all of the agencies. So, they've known informally about this problem for quite some time. The formal notice has not really gone to everybody, so that's the, I think that's the issue. Some people have already begun to work, some people have been waiting to see if the council was going to be able to bail them out in some way, so they haven't begun to work. So, the agencies are all over the map.
And finally, what type of help or assistance are these organizations getting from the city to, because I think we bear some responsibility for the predicament they're in, and I would like to see the city help them move out of this predicament. What type of assistance are we providing for them to get through this?
We are providing a high level of technical assistance, and I'll have Laura Ito, who's in charge of that process, describe it to you.
We've been working with each agency on the language that they would need to incorporate into their bylaws and articles of incorporation regarding their service area and the scope of services that we believe would meet the HUD requirements. We're also working with them extensively on how they can get their board members to qualify. There are a number of certification forms that they prepare for each board member, and so we've been working with them on all of that as well.
Let me just ask your opinion. Do you think we're doing everything we can within our capacity to support them in the help they need, or should we today set a formal recommendation or amendment to this to say, let's form a working group of city agencies to get them their help?
I think in most cases, this is an individual agency issue, so I don't believe a working group would really be helpful. It's going to be an important decision for each agency and for each agency's board to make as to whether they really want to go through the changes it would take to qualify. I think we've provided them extensive assistance so they understand what the changes are. They may need some legal assistance in making those changes and understanding the impact to their organizations.
Thank you. And colleagues, I would like to motion that we do a 90-day ability for them to come back to us, whatever the proper language is there. I hope that 30 to 60 days is sufficient, but for those of you who have worked in nonprofits, we're being pulled in a number of different directions. Every day to provide the service sometimes is all we could focus on, and to do the administrative things we have to do, to get our Board of Directors there, to have people review these things, it may take, in my view, longer than 60 days. If there's no damage, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, there's no downside to that. I would hope that we give that time, and hopefully, the organizations that are here today and listening to this, you would try to do it as soon as possible, and I think you will, but I'd rather be on the safe side and give that additional 30 days, just in case there's one or two that need that additional time and not be penalized. So, thank you very much for the second, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker, and then Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Rosendahl, and Ms. Gruel. Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the City Attorney, question if I may, if the City Attorney could go to the center table. I just needed some clarification, wanted to know if it is possible for grantees to participate in the development of policy related to funding and clarification of CBDOs.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Norrie Vincent from the City Attorney's Office, and I think that we certainly have had participation from the grantees in a variety of different ways. Certainly, I know CDD has had meetings with the grantees. We've actually met with representatives from Betzettic and Neighborhood Legal Services to talk about the issues. I believe the CUP and the CAB also meet and participate. But I think that, and certainly, we're always willing to hear and to talk to the grantees and to listen to what they have to say.
So, let me tell me this, and what kind of input are they permitted to have pursuant to the process?
Well, I think that they have talked to us about, asking about how certain decisions were made to fund organizations. They've inquired about whether funding should be, for example, cutbacks across the board as opposed to certain agencies being cut out. I think if the question is, for example, I saw at one time that there was a proposal to have a working group formed with representatives from, for example, Neighborhood Legal Services and Betzettic to actually work with CDD, to work with CLA's office, and to make recommendations to the council as to how the funding should be allocated, that we then began to get into a situation, for example, where there is a potential 1090 question, Government Code Section 1090. And what we would want to be careful of is that, to the extent that they would be part of a formal group making recommendations, for example, to the council, one could certainly raise the issue that they may be considered officials under 1090, participating in a decision that would influence a contract that would ultimately be awarded to them. And in that instance, if 1090 were applicable, they would be precluded from receiving funding.
Is there some point in the process which they can participate and then be, either stop or recuse themselves from being recipients?
Well, I think that, for example, if they want to talk to CDD about issues, if they've looked at the regs and they have a different interpretation, I think that's fine. I think they've already done that. I think as we get closer to the idea of actually having an instruction that they be a working group specifically tasked with responsibility for making recommendations, I think that's on the other end of the spectrum, and I think that would certainly implicate 1090 or raise that specter. So, I think it sort of depends on what they would intend to do and how they would intend to provide input. But talking to the department and talking to the CLA, certainly, agencies do that all of the time.
My sense of it is that they may be looking to give input based on the fact that these are regional public interest law firms and the opinion that they have and expertise in federal funding and HUD regulations. So, I'm going to recommend that maybe, you know what I'll do, let me work on a motion on that and then see what we can come out of that. And also, one other quick question, there's a concern regarding the definition of neighborhood in HUD regulations. Can you define what that is pursuant to HUD regulations?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Teresa Luhon from our office to address that issue, but I just wanted to make one more comment. To the extent that there is a formal motion coming from the council, that does tend to move us closer toward the issue of 1090, and also the issue that whatever body would meet would then be potentially covered by the Brown Act as well.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Teresa Luhon, City Attorney's Office. Your question was how to do with the definition of neighborhood?
In the HUD regulations.
Well, neighborhood, HUD would consider neighborhood an area smaller in size, a community, but it's actually a neighborhood would be part of a community. But, so, a neighborhood could qualify as a community-based development organization, but it can be broader than a neighborhood, you can be broader than a neighborhood in order to qualify as well. You can be a community, and we've defined community as serving one particular area with similar demographics, similar interests. It has to be contiguous. That's how we define community, and if you meet that definition of community, then you can qualify as a CBDO.
Okay. How much input does the city have on the interpretation of the definition?
Well, HUD has not asked us to give them an interpretation, and we don't believe HUD will. HUD has asked us to look at the regulations, to look at the guidance that HUD has provided in the past. Also, sometime in May of '05, HUD did give us some feedback on what they don't consider to be a neighborhood or community, and HUD has said that they're concerned about, certainly, a citywide organization would not be considered a community-based organization, and they question whether even a city council district would be considered a community.
Okay. Last question, Sharon.
And then if you can press your button again.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
No, go ahead. You can do your last question.
Just a quick question, Sharon, you might be best. Talked about this before, but if LA's best was not under the service cap, what would that do to this situation?
It would give us about $2.8 million in public services money that could be used for these agencies.
Okay. What's the shortfall now, roughly?
Well, it's unknown until we know how many agencies qualify, but it's roughly $6 million.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Many of my concerns were asked and clarified by the dialogue that Councilmember Weisar had put forth, but I do have a request of CDD to get back to this council as soon as we get back to council after the break, to let us know which agencies did confirm affirmatively that they will be pursuing CBDO status and which agencies confirmed that they will not, and also let us know which agencies you haven't been able to confirm with either way. I think it's very important for us to understand that, because regardless of who chooses to participate or not, the services need to be rendered. And if we're creating a void somewhere, then we need to somehow communicate to the service providers, the agencies, that there may be a void out there and that there may be an opportunity for them to serve that community. Obviously, not automatic, they still have to go through all of the requirements to prove that they can service that community. Is that report possible?
Yes, absolutely.
And as of this time, at this time, do we feel comfortable or confident that we, as a city, are clear as to who has affirmatively decided where they're going to be, whether they're going to pursue CBDO status or not, or are there some ambiguity still out there?
There's still some ambiguity out there.
Okay. Is any of that ambiguity coming from organizations that are trying to communicate to us and understand what it's going to take for them to be able to confirm that status or acquire that status?
Right. You know, many of the agencies have to go back to their governing boards to talk about, to make some very tough decisions, you know, to change the character of your organization to fit this pot of money. For some of the citywide organizations, they may be looking at creating subsidiaries, and those are big questions for a board to consider. And so, you know, while we know that many of them will be exploring this, that, you know, no firm decision has been made yet.
See, that's what troubles me about the timeline, unfortunately, is, as Councilman Weisar pointed out, it's not just them making a decision overnight and then saying, we got to convene our board, we got to change our bylaws or what have you. I think there's a certain amount of time where they have to go through some soul-searching to figure out whether or not they can actually move to that level or apply themselves in that way, because they were never required to do so in the past. And so, I think it's important for us to be mindful of the fact that there's some soul-searching going on with these agencies, first and foremost, before they decide, you know, we're going to go for it, and then all of a sudden, then they start their formal process internally or what have you to try to pursue it. So, hopefully, we'll have this before the council as soon as we get back, so we can know the status in the next three weeks and to see if anything's changed or anything's improved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Could somebody explain to me how we got into this situation? What did the federal government do that changed the dynamic? Hold my time.
Okay. We've been doing the CBDO certifications for about five years, and what the regulation says is, in order for an agency to become a CBDO, you must do these things. And chief among them is that you have to provide a service that enhances economic development. Ordinarily, the services provided by these agencies would be counted under public services, but, you know, if we can say that they are enhancing economic development, we did our best to qualify them as a CBDO. And there are certain things, like the geography and the board makeup, that we were not being that strict on, because the regulation allows for be all of these things or substantially similar. And we were qualifying most of these agencies as substantially similar, so that they didn't have to change their board. And that's what HUD told us we can't do anymore.
Why did they say that? What was HUD's logic on that?
They thought we were abusing the process, basically. And so, they told us, just ignore substantially similar and, you know, begin to bring these agencies into compliance. And, you know, as I was saying earlier, we talked to them, we had a dialogue, and so they understand how far we have to bring the agencies. They're not saying, don't fund these services, they recognize the services as valuable. We're here because it is so difficult to bring everyone into compliance, and one of the things we were really hopeful of is, rather than changing governing boards or starting subsidiaries, that we could use the advisory board scenario. And it was late in the game when they told us, no, we couldn't go in that direction.
When the federal government told you you couldn't go?
Right.
So, it was late in the game.
Yes.
So, we're pressed against the wall because of the federal government's new definition of what one gets for funding and me giving you the clarity that you needed to have.
That's right.
Now, do we have the clarity?
Now that we have the clarity, you know, that's what's brought us here today.
Okay. And with my colleague, Councilwoman Weisar, his excellent set of questions there, do you have any problem, or doesn't it make sense, from your standpoint, to give them another 30 days so that now that we know where to dot the i's and cross the t's, as the good federal government is trying to suggest, that that gives them enough time to make it work?
Yes. I'm more comfortable with that. And, you know, and we don't want everyone to wait, and, you know, I hope they're hearing this discussion, the sooner they can get themselves certified, for those who can, you know, the better.
How many groups are we talking about and how much money?
How many groups are there, Laura?
It's approximately 40 agencies.
How many?
About 40.
40 agencies.
And over $15 million.
And over $15 million is in jeopardy if we don't go forward with a plan that we're just told you must go with.
Yes.
And do you feel all 40 agencies got enough understanding now that they can put together the right rubrics that the federal government wants?
Well, I think they have the understanding. I'm not, I don't think that all 40 are going to be able to do that, because it may involve setting up a subsidiary organization which would now then assume the responsibility and governing duties that their current Board of Directors has. So, they may need to set up a whole different organization, own articles, own bylaws, own 501(c)(3) status, that would be in charge of just the CDBG program, and it just may not be worthwhile for them to do that, to contort their organization so much to qualify for this money.
Do you have any sense of how many out of the 40 might fall into that second category at this point?
I really don't.
Would you say that all 40 are doing good work in the community and should be funded if you had your way?
Absolutely, yes.
You do? Well, then, what we need to do is have two categories, one, that can quickly move forward, that got their act together, and Mr. Weisar was saying, all the stuff you have to go through, and then the second group, can you give them support in helping them reach that point? So, if they're doing worthwhile services, I want that federal government to fund these groups, period. So, we have to find a way to make it work. Can we do that?
I think we would be looking for, we would be pursuing, looking for other funding rather than trying to get some of those agencies to qualify.
Really?
I think the agencies will just, may just determine that it is not in their overall best interest to change their board, which may be, you know, a very aggressive fundraising board, to comply with the HUD requirements. So, we will have agencies that opt not to do, to get CBDO certified. Certainly, we respect the Certainly, we respect the services and think they're very valuable, and that there should be an alternate funding for them.
Sure.
But I don't think it's going to be from the CBDO pot of money.
Well, that's, is that unfortunate from your perspective?
Clearly, yes.
It is. Is there anything we can do about it here, the city of Los Angeles?
Raised, and we've heard that that is, you know, not an option anymore for the city.
Can you give us an update after the recess as to which of the 40 have gotten their act together and which haven't, and what other strategies we might come up with?
Sure.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, and a lot of good questions have been asked by my colleagues, and I made the statement in committee, which was the fact that it was very important that when we made the decision to fund all these organizations and to fund them also through CBDOs, that we were all under the impression that everyone would be made whole, and so that we're now in a bad position, because we have made promises and commitments and made decisions on the City Council without having kind of any notification that they might not qualify, and therefore, we needed to make some tough choices then. Now we're in a catch-22. I wholeheartedly support what has been said by my colleagues, as one, that we want to guarantee that they are funded through that first year. We know we have some difficult decisions between now and then to make for subsequent years, but the most important thing right now is that we respond, give them enough time, as Mr. Weisert has asked, to comply if they can, come back with additional funds to ensure that we can meet it through March 31st, because we know, again, part of the issue is the cuts in the HUD money and the CDBG, the fact that we had a 25% service cap before, that now is a 15% cap, because we went back down to kind of the national, and the HUD regulations, as someone who worked at HUD, we know those regulations sometimes are even more important than what happens in Congress, because those changes can affect our funding. So I think you're hearing loud and clear, you heard in Budget Committee, I think you heard in Housing Committee, and you're hearing in the City Council, that the organizations, and particularly so many of the legal aid organizations that are here, get funded to the level and the kinds of services, because what they do is not always seen as direct service, but it is, and it impacts homeless and women and domestic violence, you name all the kinds of elder abuse, et cetera. So I just wanted to stand up and kind of be with the choir today, as I was in committee, on the importance of funding for this. So, Madam President, that would be it. I'll go quickly on my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to just comment, Mr. Weisert made the comment about 90 days. I don't believe 90 days is harmful, except if we do not insist that they start the 30-day process and make us aware, and start, at least initiate, the process of becoming qualified in the first 30 days. If we don't insist on those two things, then stretching it out for 90, where they're still making up their mind, is going to impact negatively on our funding sources. So I would think that if we want to spread to the 90-day period, the first part of it that's in the Budget and Finance Report, we have to ensure and insist that they notify us of what their intentions are in the first 30 days, and at least start the process of becoming certified, or else it throws all of this mechanics out of the picture.
We agree absolutely that we need to know right away if they're going to pursue the process.
One thing you mentioned at committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there is funding for certified programs. It's not an issue of money not being available if you're certified.
That's correct. That money is in the consolidated plan for anybody who is certified.
And that would take people to March.
March 31st, right.
The key for us, the people who can't certify or choose not to certify, is getting them funded from our commitment from September 30th to March.
That's correct.
That's where it could impact the general fund.
Yes.
Okay, unless you find other money.
We're looking.
But, Mr. Weisert, I just think that we need to, if we give the 90 days, we need to insist that the committee report of the 30-day notification and the effort within the first 30 days has to stay intact, even though you have 90 days to comply.
I think that is correct.
Yes.
We do need to know, we need to have notice and prepare, but if they do have to make those changes. I took up something Mr. Cardenas said, it's not so much only creating subsidiaries or boards.
Press your button again, Mr. Parks, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't see your button pressed, I'm sorry.
No, when he gets back, I just have one other comment.
Okay, just press your button, so I have it up on the queue, please. Go ahead, Mr. Weisert.
Did I speak out of order? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, you did, but you're already way into it, so why don't you go ahead and finish, and then?
Mr. Cardenas is going to tell me to sit down, but I have something good to say about him right now, so can I still go on, Mr. Cardenas? Actually, he made a good point, which is, it's not so much only doing a structural change, but it's asking yourself, as an organization, your mission, and that is something you do have to reflect upon, and it may take additional time that you need, but I agree with Mr. Parks, that if we at least know their intent and have that within the first 30 days, it'll help us start preparing as to what workload you're going to have to prepare for.
And all I have to comment to the colleagues, that we intend to have this back before the 28th in Budget and Finance, so we'll know, at least at that point, the intent and what CBDOs are working in the process to become certified.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, Madam Clerk, there are no further speakers in the queue. There's no further speakers in the queue. You want to press your button? Thank you.
Point of information, if we, I'd like to amend my motion to continue to do the 90 days, but to have a 30-day, what's the correct language, if you could help me? Notice?
They would have 30 days to notify us of their intention.
A 30-day notice of their intention with a 90-day to comply.
With an additional 60 days for the, for compliance.
60 days for compliance, bingo.
Madam Clerk, what's before us is...
The item is amended, it's the Budget and Finance Committee report was moved with the 30-day, allowing the agencies 30 days to notify and 90 days to comply, and then there was amending motion 9A that was distributed to all the council members with the controller instructions.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you.
9A is the amending also? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 10, that was called special by Councilmember Lavand, but I believe he said all his questions were answered, so council can proceed with that.
Okay, I guess we're on item 10 now.
My questions were answered, and I thank staff for the answers.
I'll acknowledge the Chair of the Energy and Environment, then followed by Ms. Hahn. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and if you could ask Mr. Miller if he can come to the table for a quick question. This has been a great deliberative process pursuant to the bond language, and I just need to ask Mr. Miller to clarify and reassure that the recommendations in the committee report are in conformance with the bond language and not in contradiction.
They are. You know, the bond language indicates that the COAC is advisory, as is VROC that I sit on. The recommendations, I think, before you are, really go to process and how they need to be involved in terms of looking at the material, but they still are in the final analysis and advisory agency.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand there were some people here who wanted to speak on this item. Do we have to reopen?
No, no, this item is before, so I don't, I think there's been a public hearing, but yes, we can open that hearing. Would you like to open that up, Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, I would. I think I would like to speak on this before my remarks.
Okay.
I'd like to have my three minutes back.
Yes, we will give you your three minutes back. Tom Ford, Joyce Dillard, John Hurtado, Paul Hersog, and Mark Huffman.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Tom Ford of the Santa Monica Bay Keeper. In appreciation of the efforts of the Santa Monica Bay Keeper, Heal the Bay, NRDC, those of the L.A. City Council to promote clean water throughout Los Angeles, the passage of Proposition 0 and the establishment of the COAC. In the future, for Prop O to realize quantifiable water quality benefits in Los Angeles, all Prop O proposals should be fully vetted through the COAC prior to council deliberation. This notion is completely supported by the Energy and Environment Committee report, as amended by Council President Garcetti, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joyce Dillard?
As a citizen participant of the Citizens Oversight Committee, I want to express my appreciation to them, because they're not a legislative courtesy committee. They do discuss items. I appreciate Dr. Mark Gold with his expertise, and we face quite a challenge with this water bond money. It's only $500 million when there's $116 billion in the county of water quality issues. The bond is supposed to cover public entities, I want to make sure that happens, I want to make sure there's some assessment to this. The dollars here are different than what the COAC's approved, and I would like to find out why that is. Like I said, there's more of a thorough discussion in the Citizens Oversight Committee on if these projects are beneficial overall. The assessments, the timelines of the assessments are very important, and getting it out to the community, having water committees maybe on the neighborhood councils, things like that to make this work. It's really, at this point, not a win situation yet. It's just a Band-Aid for something that may bite you later as the fines come in with the federal regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hurtado?
Good afternoon. I'm John Hurtado, I'm the Executive Director of New Schools, Better Neighborhoods. We have the pleasure of working with CD14 on two proposals. One is Project Number 31, which is the Parking Grove in Al Sorino, and the second project is the Boyle Heights Joint Use Project. The project, the latter project refers to a unique opportunity for the city of Los Angeles through Prop O to contribute to the design of a joint-use center that will accommodate the maintenance of preschool seats that would otherwise be lost due to the construction of New East L.A. High School Number 1. This project, Prop O, will enable a unique opportunity to collect a significant amount of stormwater coming off the Hollywood Freeway, the north and southbound exits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Hersog?
Hi, I'm here today representing Surf Rider. It's a bummer we have to wait four and a half hours and only have one minute to speak on such a serious subject. From the beginning of the Prop O process, Surf Rider had reservations, because there was never a plan. We hope in Phase 2 or Round 2, there will be a plan, and the IRP process was promising to in fact do that, and we had good faith in the city to comply with the goals of the IRP. Now the Phase 2 has literally gone down the toilet of the IRP, and literally, because it's dealing just with wastewater treatment facility capacity, but that's not the goal of the IRP. The goal is to have an integrated, comprehensive plan that deals with the number-one problem with the stormwater runoff. You must finish the IRP before considering even something like Round 2, because you need a structure to fit those projects into, and that is important, because you have to think about the future like a son of Prop O, and will the public support another bond measure when they see very little happening?
Thank you. Mark Huffman?
Good afternoon, council members. Mark Huffman, Executive Director, Planning and Attitlements at Playa Vista. Just like to echo the gentleman from the Baykeeper earlier, that going forward, all projects be fully vetted by the COAC, and we encourage the council to adopt the reports as recommended by the Budget and Finance and Energy and Environment Committees, and respect the decision of the COAC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment. Period. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Hahn.
My three minutes? Thank you. Colleagues, I introduced a motion in June, because I was very concerned that the Prop O process was moving, in my opinion, way too slowly. The voters overwhelmingly, 76%, approved Prop O in November of 2004, so we're coming up on our second-year anniversary of the voters agreeing with us and willing to pay for the cleaning up of our waterways, our lakes, our rivers, our streams, and trying to reduce the trash that goes into our waterways. Many of us who campaigned for this, who went out and tried to get people to vote for this, specifically talked about projects that people could relate to. For me, in my district, there were two, I like to call them poster child projects for Prop O. One was the Inner Cabrio Beach, which is probably one of the unhealthiest beaches in L.A. County, receives an F every report card season by Heal the Bay, and it is the place in the harbor area where mothers take their small children to swim in the water, because it has no waves. It's actually called Mother's Beach, and it is polluted, and it has been polluted for a long time. The other one in my district is Lake Machado, more famous now for harboring an alligator, but this has been a lake that has been polluted, it's toxic, we've known this for a long time, and both of those projects, I think, are what got at least the harbor area to agree, to vote for this, and to, again, you know, pay money to clean these things up. I really want to thank Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks for hearing these in your committees, moving it forward to council today. What I asked for was, I wanted a list, and I think I asked for 30 days, I wanted a list back from our departments on the projects that were ready to be funded and approved and move forward. We have yet to spend any money from Prop O, and I think that's wrong. I think that's a breach of trust with the voters, because you know we're going to go back to our voters, time and time again, asking them to support bonding projects that pay for something. If we wait two years before we do something, I think we lose a lot of the faith of the public. I think the Administrative Oversight Committee has been working very hard, I appreciate their work on this, I appreciate Jerry Miller and Bill Fujioka, and I'd like for them to actually come here. I've got a couple of questions. I guess I will have to push my button.
We'll hear from Ms. Perry, and then we'll have you push a button again. Ms. Perry?
Clear me out.
You're finished? Okay.
Okay. Um, Karen?
Push the button again, so start with the first.
What do we have before us today? Give us an overview of what this report recommends. Hold my time.
Let's see, I think adding it all up, you've got approximately $49 million worth of projects that are being sent forward, you've got several categories, you've got catch basins, low-flow diversions, and the San Monica Bay Best Practices Project, you've got the Inner Cabrio Beach Project, Oroz Green Street in South Los Angeles Wetlands Park, and you also have the Cesar Chavez Groundwater Improvements in South L.A. Wetlands Park. So those are the projects that are now being sent forward for funding. The ordinance that levies the tax for purposes of issuing the bonds has already been approved by the council. Also, before you, were a number of recommendations relative to working with the COAC, as Ms. Perry indicated, and sort of looking at the process through which the reviews are going to occur on some of the concept studies.
You know, just for my edification, the funding for Inner Cabrio Beach was, at one point, $15 million, because I know it's a $30 million project, it's relocation or removal and replacement of the sand, but the storm drain was also a part of the original $30 million projects, and I see that the funding has gone from $15 million to $8 million, and I wondered, who made that recommendation and why?
Well, I think sanitation is here, and they need to come forward and address that. They're working with the harbor. My understanding is that there was an allocation of funding between Prop O and the harbor, and that the harbor is taking on more of the project. It was, as I recall, originally eight, it then went up to 15, and through discussions, it's back down now through eight through Prop O. Prop O.
Shuam Karagani, Bureau of Sanitation. The project council member still has a price tag of $30 million. The funding part from Prop O is $8 million. It was my understanding that the Harbor Department person, Mr. Iran, Kert Iran, said the rest would be funded by Harbor Department, and it was COAC decision of bringing that down and went through the committees.
All right. Do we have that in writing, that the Harbor Department is going to pick up the rest of this funding?
No, I have not sent anything myself in writing. I have not.
See, I mean, you can see I'm a little bit nervous. Again, this is a project that has been on the books for a very long time. We've gone through another summer where there are signs that are posted warning people of swimming there, and a lot of people don't have a lot of options in the summer of where they can take their kids swimming. And we're going through one more summer where it's still polluted, it hasn't been cleaned up, and so I just want to, you know, know what commitment we have from the Harbor Department to pick up the...
Actually, Councilmember, the Inner Cabrio Beach is also a TMDL, and we have deadline to meet by TMDL. So my understanding of the, from the Harbor Department, they are moving forward. They are moving forward with all the elements of this. There are three elements within this project, as you stated.
Sand, relocation, the storm drain.
Correct. And then creating circulation within the beach.
I read something or heard something that the COAC actually was not convinced that the storm drain was the problem, and yet everything we're hearing is this is about stormwater runoff. Everything that, you know, goes into the waterways upstream ends up in the Pacific Ocean. So it seems to me the storm drain is definitely a part of the pollution of this project. Is that correct?
Correct. My understanding was that they lacked a storm drain relocation. The issue was that should it be funded from Prop O as opposed to Harbor? I don't think they had any problem with elements of the project. The issue was that which element should be funded from Prop O and which element from Harbor Department? That was the issue.
Yeah, okay. Well, the project needs to be completed. You know, I just think leaving it up to the Harbor Department is leaving it up to, you know, whoever happens to be there, what the commission sees as a priority. I mean, priorities change, and it just, this was not my feeling when we passed Prop O. I wanted the Oversight Committee to pay attention to it. I want the council to pay attention to it, and I, you know, I'm not as comfortable just trusting the Harbor Department to pay for the rest of this.
But Councilmember, since this is a TMDL, we must, the city must, you know, implement enough, you know, enough elements of the project to comply. We are on the hook for that, and you have my assurance that I would work with Harbor Department to make sure that every element of that project is done.
Because since I've been elected, I have been complaining about Inner Cabrio Beach to the Harbor Department and have yet to see the massive commitment of funding to clean that beach up.
I might suggest an instruction for everyone to report back after the break with a complete breakdown on project scope and funding sources.
Okay. Let me just ask about these projects that are on the B-list. And it says we are approving the following 15 projects for the development of full proposals. And I'm assuming that's part of what was said today in public comment, that we want to make sure before we spend the money that we have a definite plan, a definite proposal for these projects, so that the money we spend really does go to the overall purpose of cleaning up the water. My concern, again, is that Lake Machado is on there, and I can't believe, after all these years, we do not already have several proposals of how to clean that lake up. I hold in my hand one of them that was written in 2002. We have studied this lake. We have, I remember when Senator Deborah Bowen appropriated $1 million for a report to study how to clean up that lake. We've studied it. We've had task force. We have community advisory groups that have been working on that, and so it was very disappointing to me to see Lake Machado on the B-list without, with waiting for a full proposal of how to clean that lake up. We have this, and there's two other volumes that are as thick as this, talking about the master plan for that entire park and how to clean up that lake.
Councilmember, for Lake Machado, actually, we have a very good plan. What is taking place right now through a series of workshop is coordination with Department of Recam Park and Advisory Board around the parks. We have a plan. We want to make sure that everyone input is considered before we move on. We do have a plan for that.
You know, that's not really what this is about. That's not what Prop O and the Oversight Committee is about. We have put our faith in the voters, and we put our faith in the Citizens Oversight Committee to make recommendations on moving forward. I guarantee you, everyone around there, every group that you just met is on board cleaning up that lake. I was out at the lake 6:30 a.m. Wednesday morning, and I will tell you, I was out on a little pontoon. It is dirty. It is polluted. It smells, and I think maybe that might have been the demise of poor Reggie, is being in that lake. So I am, you know, that's not a very good answer.
But that's the fact as of right now, Councilmember.
That, Lake Machado, that ought to be on the A-list, ready to go.
And I think there may be a misunderstanding. The B and A does not have as much significance, Councilmember. What COAC and AOC have asked us to do, to bring back to them with everyone's input, the big plan, and that's what we are working on. I think the B does not have as much...
I submit the big plan.
I'm aware of that thing that you have.
It's already taken place. You have all the advisory groups, all the community groups, you have the PAB, you have the, you know, Audubon Society. Everyone participated in this plan. You already have it.
And we are going before the committees, I think, the next month or so for full funding.
Okay, well, you know, I will just tell you, this is the problem, in my opinion. We have, again, almost two years ago, the voters approved, and I know that they thought about Lake Machado and Inner Cabrio Beach in the harbor area when they approved this. And they know about these plans, that we have found money already to support and to develop. So for you to say, "We're still waiting to get everybody's input on moving forward on the proposal," is not really what I want to hear today. You've got to move quicker. You've got to spend this money ultimately cleaning up the lakes. That's what the people of Los Angeles want. We were in a lawsuit over this. You know it well. We need to move forward and spend the money on the projects that are ready to go, and I will tell you, Inner Cabrio Beach and Lake Machado are ready to go, and much longer, and, you know, how many more birds or ducks have to die because we're still waiting for input.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And now, a few words from Council President Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and colleagues, excuse me for being out of the room for a moment. I want to, I know there's some dissension about the implementation of a good thing, but I do want to step back and say a couple of words about the good thing and then go back to the points of contention because I think Councilwoman Perry and I, Councilmember Weiss, all the folks that kind of worked hard to put this forward, Councilmember then Vierigosa, now Mayor Vierigosa, and this entire council felt very strongly at a time when we didn't know whether we could deal with these things called TMDLs, essentially cleaning up our water with, from all sorts of pollutants, how we would ever pay for it, and nobody ever believed that the voters of Los Angeles would vote for something, and they did. And I think they did because of the leadership of this council. We had great allies in the environmental community, in the neighborhood councils that were out there, in the business community, but bottom line, people understood in a very intimate way that clean water was important for the quality of their own lives. And we passed something that's both cleaning polluted stormwater, keeping pollution, trash, toxic chemicals, dangerous bacteria out of our rivers and beaches, preserving clean drinking water by protecting that groundwater quality, reducing flooding, increasing water conservation, and protecting bays, rivers, and lakes from water contamination. As one of the authors of Proposition 0, it was very important to me that we look at things that, if all else was equal, clean water but also are having a community benefit. The first and most important thing is cleaning the water, but if you have two equal projects that clean the water and one also has other benefits that come with it, then of course we can save ourselves money. As a body, we can help improve communities and strengthen neighborhoods by doing that as well. Recently, it wasn't Prop O funded, but when we opened up a park along the Los Angeles River, which literally drains all of Elysian Valley into this park, and the grass flows down, and then there it naturally filters back in the water where before it would have been flushed out into the Los Angeles River and out polluted into our lakes, ocean bays. This thing not only captured the attention of Elysian Valley and the city of Los Angeles, but there's articles around the country about this. I read a newspaper in Kentucky that talked about it. It was in Florida. It was upstate in Northern California because I think people are beginning to get how water works and what a watershed is, and that is because of the work of this council, the environmental partners that we have, and we have a great Citizens Oversight Advisory Committee and an Implementation Committee of our own city bureaucracy that understands this as well, working on this. So right now, we're arguing, it's important for the public who's hearing this, we're arguing about how can we best maximize those dollars, but the point is that Los Angeles has more of those dollars, is spending more of those dollars, and is doing that with, I think, more technical expertise than we have anywhere else in the country. This Bureau of Sanitation understands that, and I would just ask the Bureau of Sanitation to feel confident. I know sometimes we knock you around, sometimes there's competing pressures, but you can step up and tell us where the technological and technical points are doing their job. We have that faith in you. I know that you, Shuam, have more degrees than all of us combined around this horseshoe, and I hope degrees count for something in this case. But also know that it's very important for those people who are part of this coalition to demand those clean water aspects be documented. So while I think it's important that we move with haste on this because the voters want to see how this is going to happen, and we have to have enough faith to jump in with both feet because some of this we're making up as we go along, not in a bad way. We're testing different technologies, all of which will give us some bang, but we're going to see what gives us the most bang, and in doing that, spend it out the most responsibly. We're also going to spend dollars, as we are right now, that aren't Proposition 0 dollars, and for our friends as well that are environmental partners, it's important for them to hear that because we have a commitment around this horseshoe. We've put it, and we've defended that when it was going to be moved out from our unappropriated balance, sorry, from our MICLA funding, to make sure that we fund on top of Proposition 0 quite a bit because we know $500 million ain't going to make Santa Monica Bay crystal clear. It's going to take a good dent out of that, but it's going to require a good decade and a half, two decades of steady work and funding, and I hope the federal government does step up because they're the ones who gave us these requirements and then totally obliterated any funding steadily since 1973 for this stuff. So, you know, in conclusion, and because I could talk about this for much longer, but I know you've already debated all this, I've looked at this list, I've looked at it carefully. I, as much as anybody in this room, wants to make sure that every dollar is being spent on clean water. I can't abide by something that would be going just as a pet project someplace. We have too much riding on it. We have our own words as politicians, which is all that you have in this business, and I feel comfortable moving this forward. I do want to know in the second phase how we're going to refine that and make it an even better process. And we do need to give the Citizens Oversight Advisory Committee, which doesn't have final approval, but they do, but we should be listening to them and not contradicting what they say. That's why it was there. We should be giving them our final projects and not changing them in between the time we show it to them and then we vote on it. That's not the way to establish public trust, and I hear that loud and clear from our COAC. I feel that loud and clear as well, and we have to continue to do that while not holding up some of this testing of this so that we know how to collect clean water. At the end of this $500 million, this half-billion of dollars, I know we will have leveraged double that amount of money. I know that we will from state sources, from our own money and from other sources as well, especially if this infrastructure bond goes through at the state level. And then when we look back on what we have done with this money, we will have realized that not only did we lead the way, we inspired, hopefully, the watersheds around us to do the same thing, and we call on the county, and we call on our neighboring cities to do that. They are still, in many cases, fighting these requirements, and I hope that we've shown the way through that this can actually get done. So I would recommend that we move this forward and send back for informational purposes to the COAC the changes that happened this time because I know that there were some doubts there, but we should move it forward so we don't lose our leverage funds. I mean, this is a case of actually having leverage out there in the Chavez Park. We don't want to lose that, so let's move that forward, but at the same time, give it back to them. I know that the minds can come together on this with the Bureau of Sanitation's leadership, environmental community pushing that. You guys both know water, and you can come together on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. There are no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll?
Excuse me, Madam President. There are two reports on the file of Budget and Finance and, eh, Budget and Finance. Okay.
Mr. Parks? Yes. Yes. Okay, thank you. Anyone else need to make a comment? All right. So that's on, that matter is before us now, Madam Clerk. Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance report.
Okay, go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance report.
Okay, go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that will be, the next speaker will be Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to say this will be my last public comment for this session. Everybody have a nice break. I'll leave some Zuma Dog Eric Garcetti autograph cards for everybody right here. Thank you so much, and I'd like to say this is very important because this is for simplification of the ballot. I've got one thing that's very complex on this. You've got the term limit extension item that's commingled with the ethics portion, and that's very confusing because I might only want to vote on the ethics part because I don't feel like extending all of y'all's terms. But how do I do that? Because you put them together, that's a big bamboozle, y'all. So if you want to simplify this, take your own city's attorney's advice. You can take the ethics part if you really want to clean up City Hall and be ethical and put it as an agenda item, and just get that out of the way now. Then you can put that on the charter later and vote for it, but get the ethics right now on agenda, and then we can let the people vote for the, we can let people vote for the term extensions also. And the LAUSD, the mayor, is that up on here? The Mayor LAUSD bill, is that up on the ballot? Can I have an answer, please? Why isn't that on the ballot?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Candido Maraz. Is Candido here? All right, I guess he stepped away. Our next speaker will be Mr. Michael Hunt. Mr. Michael Hunt. Next speaker will be Mr. Matthew Dowd. Finished? Okay. All right, that's it for all the speaker cards. Thank you.
Item, item number 12 is before council.
Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item number 13, and that was also called Special Four Cards on the Public.
Okay, I believe some of the names I've called, they're no longer here in the room. Again, that was Matthew Dowd, who's gone. Mr. Michael Hunt is gone. Mr. Candido Maraz is not here. Okay. There are no further speakers.
Then that item is before council.
Go ahead and open, oh, Mr. Parks, did you want to speak?
We have one special, the city attorney.
Let's open the roll on 13 then. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, there is a special one that has been introduced by Councilmember Parks, and the city attorney will speak to the findings and explain the voting, I believe, on this.
Thank you, Madam President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, CDD has been informed of the requirement to make an official request to HUD with, I'm sorry, with HUD by August 22nd in order to meet a September disbursement deadline for grant funds for the Marlton Square project. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before voting whether to withdraw the matter from committee and before considering the recommendations in the CLA report. So there are three votes, one for findings, one to withdraw from committee, and finally, whether to adopt the recommendations in the CLA report. Let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is now before us. Mr. Parks?
This is just a matter of a transfer of money from CDD to CRA because of the HUD due date of Tuesday, August 22nd. We ask that we adopt the CLA report dated August 14, 2006.
We have a second vote now, which would be to withdraw it from committee.
Let's open the roll on 13, then. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Um, Madam President, there is a special one that has been introduced by Councilmember Parks, and the city attorney will speak to the findings and explain the voting, I believe, on this.
Thank you, Madam President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, CDD has been informed of the requirement to make an official request to HUD with, I'm sorry, with HUD by August 22nd, in order to meet a September disbursement deadline for grant funds for the Morelton Square project. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before voting whether to withdraw the matter from committee, and before considering the recommendations in the CLA report. So there are three votes, one for findings, one to withdraw from committee, and finally, whether to adopt the recommendations in the CLA report.
Let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is now before us. Mr. Parks.
This is just a matter of a transfer of money from CDD to CRA because of the HUD due date of Tuesday, August 22nd. We asked that we adopt the CLA report dated August 14, 2006.
We have a second vote now, which would be to withdraw it from committee. Madam Clerk, how many votes does that require?
It requires eight votes.
Okay, that's just a majority vote. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That is now withdrawn from committee and is before us here in council. And I'd like to call on Mr. Weezer as our first speaker.
I, I don't have somebody to speak on this item.
Okay.
Mr. President, I did have a question about reconsidering an item that we, can we do it after this item?
Right, right after this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parks, any other statements you'd like to?
Due to the timing of this, we just want to transfer the money.
Sounds good. Let's open the roll on that. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And Mr. Weezer, you wanted to reconsider which item?
Yes, Mr. President, item number 68. I have a substitute motion that's been passed out. It's a technical correction on a special events.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration on item 68. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is before us, and that has been circulated as amended, so nobody wishes to be heard further. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is reapproved as amended. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Before we post and, well, it's post and refer those, but before excuses, I'd like to recognize our President Protem and the council member from the 2nd District for a special presentation here at the end of our council meeting, Wendy Gruel, ably assisted by her son Tommy.
Yes, thank you. And, and you all thought Tommy was coming to visit me today, but actually, he was coming for Leslie, because little did Leslie's husband know, but Leslie is Tommy's girlfriend, right? Is that true? Yes, he told me. So today is a very special day, in some ways, because we get to honor someone who's been very special to me and to the city. Okay. But Leslie has been my staff member for the last four years, and has been pretty incredible. And those of you that have known her, you know of all of her accomplishments. And we have a whole big proclamation here that talks about all the issues she's dealt with, housing and transportation and government efficiency. But many of these things that I get credit for, Leslie has done the hard work. Business tax reform, government efficiency items, from looking at some of the things which was banning commissioners from fundraising, the stolen vehicle program, the anti-grid lock zones, our banned taxi cabs. And most of you also know about our story of Cagney and Lacey, of us actually, you know, running after someone who did a hit and run. But she has gone above and beyond. I get nothing but compliments from her. And many of you also know that I had a little part in her meeting Nawam and putting the suggestion that they should get married. And when they came back from their honeymoon, and they said they were moving to DC because Nawam got a job, I told her it was very easy to annul a marriage, and that she could stay here. All jokingly aside, but we just are going to miss her. She's part of our family. We talked about this week, that it just seems like she's going to go on vacation and, and will be back. But I can tell you that there is no better staffer, all respect to you all, than Leslie Polner, also known as the Intense Staffer by Mr. Reyes, who I know if he was here would say the same thing. But she is joined today by her parents, Judy and Mel, who are very proud parents, and her husband Nawam. But I just thank you, she couldn't be here this morning, and so we planned it for this afternoon, but I just want to. I think we all know that there are special employees in the city that make a difference, and Leslie has been one of those. So let's give Leslie a great round of applause. She will be missed by all of us.
And I know we run into danger if we start to speak, that we're going to have everybody speak, but I do want to just say personally to what a pleasure it was working with you here, Leslie. And businesses throughout the city of Los Angeles have a lot more money in their pockets because of you, and business tax reform, and believing that that could get done. You have taken some of the most complex issues in this horseshoe and guided us all, not just Wendy, but inspired us all and guided us all. And you've always been just an amazing smiling face around here, and we're going to sorely miss you. So congratulations.
I couldn't possibly let Wendy have the last words. So I just have to say that something, because I know you have all been here very long, but I want to be quick, but I, I wanted to share just a moment with you how special Wendy is. And I thought the best way to do it might be the, the top 10 things that I've learned from Wendy Gruel, à la David Letterman. So if you'll bear with me for just a moment, I just want to share with you. So number 10 would be that every constituent deserves a response, even if they're not yours, even if they don't live in the city, even if they don't live in the state. Number nine is calling 911 is overrated. When you see a crime, go after the crux yourself. Number eight, consensus is always the best policy. When that doesn't work, bulldoze your way through. Number seven, you can breastfeed and be briefed at the same time. Number six, midnight is as good a time as any to inspect sinkholes on Laurel Canyon Boulevard. Number five, never carry a pocket knife in your purse, because you never know when the airport baggage inspector will be your constituent. Number four, it's the journey, not the destination, that's important, especially when you're on the Southwest flight from Burbank to Sacramento, and you know every single person on the plane. Number three, if you really want to keep your staff happy, find them a spouse. It's even better than a raise. Number two, driving while text messaging, putting on lipstick, and looking at a map is not hazardous. It's government efficiency. Number one, you can be in two places at once, you just have to drive fast enough. So this has been.
Okay, forget all those things I said about her.
Well, we'll never think about Councilmember Gruel being briefed in the same way.
This, this has been such an incredible journey, and I've promised myself that I'm not going to cry. But I feel so lucky to work for someone who not only believed in me, but believed in our team, and believed that we could accomplish great things together. I worked for one of the hardest-working, most dedicated public officials in Los Angeles. For every morning that I woke up feeling tired after a late evening event, I knew that Wendy had been up hours earlier to breakfast. You inspire me every single day. So to all the city council members, your staff, and the entire city staff, it has been an honor and a privilege to work with you. Los Angeles is a better place because all of you are here. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us do this this afternoon.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And we actually have a second special and a third special presentation. At least the second one right now, I'd like to ask Councilmembers Parks and Perry to come forward for a special ceremony.
Maria Perez and friends, come here. Don't act like you don't know what I'm talking about. Don't stare like, what? Okay, you don't, come on up here. Yes, and her entourage. Okay, everybody, come on, you guys. Don't let her stand up here alone. Okay. Okay. All right, this lovely young lady next to me is Maria Perez. And she has worked for me and the constituents of the 9th District since 2001. One of the nicest things that Juanita Tate ever did for me, to me, for us, is to introduce me to Maria. She first started her work on behalf of the community at the age of 13, speaking out about injustices. She worked with concerned citizens under the former executive director, Juanita Tate, from the age of 14 until 18 years old. She educated her neighbors personally, and got involved in the development of local policy that affected her family, her friends, and people she cared about. At a very early age, Maria was known as an environmental crusader. And I remember when I saw her on, was it CNN or 60 Minutes? Okay, being interviewed by Ed Bradley, right? Yeah, I was like, wow, that, that girl's something else. You know, little did I know. Now, together with some of the young people from George Washington Carver Middle School, they uncovered an environmental hazard at the proposed Jefferson Middle School, now known as the Los Angeles Academy, helped bring the problem to light, and actually forced LAUSD to mitigate the school grounds. Maria, during her five years of working with our office, has grown into an accomplished young woman. She has become a professional with a broad skill set. Her passion and her desire to promote positive change has only expanded by her experience. She has personally worked with the Department of Recreation and Parks to ensure timely construction, assisted in opening numerous parks throughout the 9th District. Annually, she coordinates the 9th District Environmental Fair and Community Cleanup that draws, I want to say, thousands, not hundreds, based on the amount of hot dogs we cooked, people for the Community Celebration and Service Fair. She has worked tirelessly, not only for me, but for the entire staff, on projects ranging from air quality management, district issues, to community meetings. And she always had a positive attitude, tackling all tasks, big and small, with enthusiasm and professionalism. She has also personally engaged her entire family, and we have grown to love them as well. She has taught many friends about her civic life, and educated them about the importance of community involvement and environmental justice issues. And while she's leaving her position here in the 9th District with my office, and I'm very proud to say that she's going to be attending the University of Santa Cruz, where she'll be pursuing a bachelor's degree in political science and legal studies. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with Maria and watch her grow personally and professionally. And I know she, some days she probably thought everybody in the office was her mother or her father, because we were always giving her unsolicited advice, and telling her to do this and not to do that. Her future is very, very bright, and holds immeasurable promise. I know that we can expect great things from her, because she's already proven to be a leader and an advocate. And so I want to say, I know you're going to do fine, I know you're going to make us all proud, and express my gratitude for her service and commitment to the people of the 9th District. Maria. Will you say something? Give it a try.
Well, I didn't know you guys were going to do this, but thank you. It's just been a wonderful experience, working for your office and given the opportunity to continue serving the 9th District. I just want to thank you, and for everything you've done for CD9. Also, as a constituent, you've just done so much and improved the district, and I'm so glad you were elected, because you've brought so much to CD9. Thank you.
It'll make me cry. Thank you. This is what we do in CD9, we cry. All right, don't go away, don't go away. Now, we have a couple of other quick surprises. You know, I feel like I'm Oprah or something, every story brings tears, but this is amazing. You know, Mr. Parks, come on over here. It's nice to be able to boss him around for a second. I hope Bobby saw that. Mr. Parks and I are fortunate that we inherited a very intelligent young man to assist us both in furthering the cause of the people of the 8th and the 9th, making sure that we secure their fair share on behalf of the people we fight for each and every day. And so we were lucky to have a fellow who is not only a retired elected official, but has endured many challenges in life, and worked very, very hard to overcome them, and, and serves, and I'll speak for myself, as an inspiration to me each and every day, because he shows me that recovery is possible. He is a beacon of hope, always with advice, both solicited and unsolicited. Where'd he go? Where'd he go? Okay, that's right, there he is, there he is. And it's always good advice. And he can give it on multiple levels, and he also, I think, can make you some cufflinks if you want. But he is none other than the individual to our right, Mr. Mike Hernandez. I'd like Mr. Parks to say a few words.
Let's start my time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dog, there's only 30 seconds left.
Zuma Dog. Okay, let me just say, I have been blessed in coming into office and having the chance to work with Mike Hernandez. I worked with him for a number of years when he was on the council. But just the matter of sharing the things that's in his head is a unique experience. The background, the understanding, the worldwide view really helps out both of our offices. Sometimes we run him ragged, because he's at two meetings in two different offices. And it's always interesting when he comes in and sits down, he says, I just got to forewarn you of this thing. I have a conflict of interest, because my 9th District boss is going in one direction, and you're going in the other. So I need to tell you that before we move forward. But he's always very honest and upfront. I'm just pleased to be a part of his 10th year anniversary and saying, thank you for the good work. 15, I'm sorry.
Give me five more.
I just will say, Mike, I've had more lunchtime than you had time on the city. But, come on up here.
Okay, Mike Hernandez. What we have for Mr. Hernandez here today is his 15-year pin. And it's a pleasure to have you here, and to be able to benefit from your experience and your intellect, and that you're still willing to give that to the people of Los Angeles is deeply appreciated.
How many of you have staffers who have 15 years with the city? And I just wanted to bring that up, because when we talk about term limits and we talk about change, that institutional memory's gone. But I really enjoy the opportunity I have to be a staffer. I had the, the challenge of being an elected official who depended on staff, and now I have the challenge of being a staffer who tries to advise elected officials. But I, something special happened today for me, and that was one Jan recognizing Maria. Most of us look for staffers who have a BA or a graduate degree, who can help us with policy. And what Maria brought to Jan Perry was basically what's happening in the district. And Jan likes to work with young people. Councilman Parks and I, we're going to have three staffers leaving, and he's basically hiring young people. And there's an advantage to young people, they're willing to work for less. And, and, and they're willing to work harder. But, but Maria's special, because when I came in, I never expected to have someone as smart as she is, as hardworking as she is, who never got to experience the college experience. She literally came from the district in a difficult neighborhood, and she continued to deal with the challenges of that neighborhood at her home, and worked for Jan Perry. And I went to teach a class one night on civil rights at East LA College, and Maria was in it. And she was basically trying to get that AA so she can go to a four-year school. And so to me, that's also what our city's about. So I just want to say thank you for Jan, for having that faith in young people and working on them. And I also have to thank Councilmember Parks, because, I mean, I, I just, I'm blessed to work with two fine elected officials who really represent the districts and care about the city. I also wanted to say, this is just my side note, it's kind of hard for me to say, but the reason you all get a break in August is because I got busted in August. And there was total turmoil in City Hall. And Ferraro decided to go dark. And we liked it. And so I get to celebrate my sobriety every year in August. And I'm celebrating nine years. But I don't believe I could celebrate nine years if it wasn't for the city family. That's been part of my experience, part of my hope, and part of my strength. So again, I want to thank you all for that. But thank you, too.
And thank you, Sylvia, if you're listening. Okay, I got one more, one more. Okay, now, this is someone, she and I worked together years ago in the 13th Council District, and I went to a meeting in the field office, and I was very naive, and I said something in the first word.
Excuse me, Councilmember Perry? Just, just right before, Mr. Rosendahl, I think, wanted to add his good wishes as well.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl.
I just wanted to say that, you know, Mike, we're all blessed to have you. First, when you were a councilman, you were great. I had you on the show a few times, we talked. But for me now, to be a member of the city family, member of the city government, when I see you in the hallways, or catch you, hear you come over to me, you whisper something in my ear about this happened 10 years ago, and this is why we're doing this, this way. And you are a part of the institutional memory, but you've also helped me, as a newly-elected elected official, in understanding how city government works. You're a blessing to all of us. You're a blessing to all of us and a treasure to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl.
Okay, let me tell you, this is my last presentation. Now, this lady is very special. She's kind of like the other half of my brain. I met her when we first started working in the 13th Council District, and, you know, she had another career before she did this, and I think it was a critical care nurse. So she was perfectly suited to be the chief of staff. She was constantly making life and death decisions, and always in a state of triage. But I remember the first meeting we had in the field office, and I said something very naive, and as was her typical, very shy and retiring way, she muttered something, and it was a very funny response, with sort of an expletive thrown in here and there, I think. But, you know, and I knew that she was special, too. And, you know, throughout the years, we went our separate ways, came back together to run the census in 2000, and, you know, when I was elected, she was right there. And I can't tell you, I couldn't do my job without her. I mean, it's just that simple. I'd probably be dead from a stroke. Of course, she can revive me, but, which actually she has done on occasion, when we've been at events, actually revived other people. But, you know, you can't ask for much more in a person like Kathy Godfrey. She is my chief of staff, and I am very proud to say that. She is absolutely tireless, and oftentimes I'll call her at 10 o'clock at night and scream while we're both watching the news, like, "I can't believe that!" You know, and we both have that same righteous indignation, which is always a nice touch, you know? When you have somebody who kind of shares your values, you know? Which is probably why we pick the chiefs of staff that we do. And so she has logged in, 10 years already, it's really hard to believe.
I didn't even know that.
But I wanted to make sure that we recognize her today as well. So I give you Kathy Godfrey, Chief of Staff, CD9.
Thank you very much. I didn't even know. I know, I know. I had no idea 10 years could pass so quickly, and I also have the honor of being the senior citizen in Jan Perry's office. So thank you all for all that you do, and I consider it an honor to be here, working among you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Smith for a presentation as well.
We're going to do this from over here. This is someone who is leaving, but not leaving, and so we're celebrating Rogelio Navarro, who came to me a year ago, fresh out of college with a law degree from USC. And I met this young man, and I said, "This is the guy who's going to go places. He's very bright, very articulate, very capable." And I knew he would move on if I couldn't find the job he really wanted, which is in land use, and my land use deputy's been with us for 15 years. And so we put him in a role, working with the legislature around here, and legislation, and working with our policy around here. And in about an hour and a half, he leaves me to go to work on the other side of the aisle for Mr. Weezer. I'm not all that upset about it, because I got two future draft picks and cash out of the deal, but it was a good deal. But anyway, Rogelio has been a real, real breath of fresh air in our office, very articulate, very bright young man. I know he's going to do great things for CD14, and we hate losing him, but fortunately for the body, he stays here in City Hall. So we want to thank him for his year of service to the people of the 12th District, welcome him to the 14th over the other side over there, and next week, the people of L.A. is going to continue to get great service from a great employee, and just thank him publicly for a year with us.
Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, I'd just like to acknowledge Noel Palais as the legislative deputy here. This is his last meeting, but he's just going down the street to Dodger Stadium, so we all have season tickets from now on. But he's just recently been selected in a job, the community outreach for the Dodgers, done a wonderful job. He put a couple of years in with Mark Ridley-Thomas, was out in the field, and came to legislate, been with me for three years. So I just want to say thank you and acknowledge him in front of the whole council. And so he will have a tough time, we're trying to replace him, but we find out that nobody will work for his salary, so...
Mr. Cardenas?
I'm sorry, Mr. Parks, you said he's going to go work for which L.A. team?
L.A. Dodgers.
Oh, the Dodgers, okay.
Not the Dodgers of L.A.
I guess this would be the right time to tell everybody that my entire staff has resigned today and is leaving. No, no, I'm just kidding. What I wanted to say, though, in all seriousness, colleagues, is this is the reason that we're all here, and it's amazing just to feel why the city family is so special, and each of the individual members who make us be able to serve and have the privilege of serving everybody there. This is our last meeting since the last time we had a recess. This has been an incredible council. We have implemented historic settlements at LAX, we've changed the way we look at trash, we've saved domestic violence shelters, we've passed a historic budget to put 1,000 police officers on the street, and have a double-A bond rating. We've taken some brave steps forward to bring an NFL team here, the L.A. River Plan is closer. I mean, I did a quick calculation, and we've probably taken up about 5,000 different items since the last time we took a break, met 150 times, listened to about 200 hours of public testimony, and that's just in council, not in our committees. It's an immense amount of work, and I feel extremely privileged to serve with each and every one of you, but I know I speak for this entire council, and we feel extremely privileged to serve the people. And we want to thank the people watching, the people who come down here, take time out of their lives to give us their thoughts and to share with us this process here at City Hall. And I hope that everybody, for the three weeks that we are out of session, but all of our offices will be open, the public should know, and all of us will be serving the public continuously through the three weeks that we have a recess, and then the two weeks of a recess, and one week, which we will be with the California League of Cities, that please call, and we will take care of any of the issues and the public business at hand. So with that, let's move to, any excuses on the table?
No, Mr. President.
All right, there are no excuses, as there should not be in government. All right. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Three weeks full, starting with Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Council President Garcetti. I'd like to announce that we're going to have a Family Health and Safety Fair from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. tomorrow, Saturday, over at the Sun Valley Recreation Center, which is at 8133 Vineland Avenue, which is off the corner of Vineland and San Fernando Road. We're going to have free car seat inspections from the CHP that'll be there, free immunizations, free medical and dental screenings. We're going to give away 200 bicycle helmets for free to the first 200 children who line up to get free bicycle helmets. We're going to have free food, and also we're going to raffle off 10 brand-new bicycles for the kids in the neighborhood. Obviously, we're going to give a helmet along with those 10 bicycles as well. We're going to have a wall climbing, skate park, moon bounce, music, family fun, all the kinds of things that you can get hurt, but don't worry, there'll be plenty of nurses and doctors there to attend to you. Again, this is a free-for-free Family Health and Safety Fair tomorrow, Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Sun Valley Recreation Center in Sun Valley, on the corner of Vineland and San Fernando Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Tomorrow morning, in Wilmington, at 10 o'clock, at the corner of Sanford and Op, we'll be dedicating the long-awaited Wilmington Community Center, full-size gymnasium. Wilmington has been, there was a newspaper article that somebody showed me, it was like 50 years ago, that the community wanted to have a gymnasium in East Wilmington. So this is a part of Wilmington that has been sorely underserved over the years, so this will be a great day tomorrow morning. So 10 o'clock, the final grand dedication of the Wilmington Gymnasium and Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to invite all the residents of Bolo Heights to join CD14, along with our partners, L.A. USD Board Member Monica Garcia, the Lucille Roybal Basela Youth and Family Center, and CDD, as we kick off our Saturday bulky item pickup program with a community cleanup day. Come and join hundreds of volunteers to clean up various areas in Bolo Heights, get to know your neighbors, drop off your bulky items, and beautify the neighborhood. Lunch will be provided. This event will take place this Saturday, August 19, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and we will meet up at the Edward Roybal Plaza Parking Lot, 2130 East First Street, at the corner of First and Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several events coming up in the 8th District. First of all, for those that are applying for the Bridges Grant for the Foché, the last day for applications, 5 o'clock today, we hope we get a large number of turnout on that. Also, for the Los Angeles Urban Policy Roundtable, in Lemur Park, we'll be having their weekly meeting Saturday, the August 19, 10:00 a.m. at Lucy Florence, at the corner of 43rd and Dagnan. And their subject this week is the Katrina survivors, to discuss, and they'll have FEMA and a variety of other federal agencies. The Regalat Social Club will be having their White Linen Party at the Rose Garden, Saturday, August 20, at 1:00 p.m., Exposition Park, Rose Garden. And then also, the National Association of Minority Contractors will be having their monthly networking meeting Tuesday, August 22, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Metropolitan Water District at 700 North Alameda. And then Mothers in Action, my final one, Mothers in Action will have their annual Health and Family Festival at Jesse Brewer Park at Exposition and Vermont, August 26, at 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Any other announcements, colleagues? This Saturday also, sorry, yes, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise to invite the entire city, the entire county of Los Angeles to, God, it's really hard to believe, I'm aging myself, the 21st anniversary of the African marketplace. It will begin with a special event this evening, but August 19 through the 20th, and then the 26 through the 27th, and then September 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Anyone that wants information can call 323-734-1164. It is at Rancho, Siena Park, at 5001 Rodeo Road, in the 10th District.
Thank you very much. And we also will be celebrating the 59th Independence Day of India this Saturday, Disney Concert Hall, there'll be festivities, and also will be, I believe in the San Fernando Valley, some festivities as well. And the next weekend after that, at our Convention Center, will be the India Expo, which brings together folks from throughout the area to look at trade between India and the United States. Mr. Parks?
Let me just ask Officer Diaz to come up. This is a young man that's got 16 and a half years on the police department. This is his last day here. He came to support us and protect this chamber. He is going to be leaving us, going to another assignment. First, he's on a vacation, so we need to honor him also, that when we see him next time, his wife will have their first child, so he's...
Congratulations. Congratulations, and thank you for your service to the City Council. It's been a great pleasure to have you here in chambers. Lastly, of course, it's our 225th birthday as a city on...
A town crier.
...celebrating September 4. I know Mr. Weezer will be welcoming any of the folks who want to reenact the Walk of the Pobladores, the original settlers here. Actually, you can walk alongside some of their descendants, all the way from the mission in San Gabriel. Does that begin at 6:00 in the morning, Mr. Weezer, thereabout? Mr. Weezer, it starts, I think, about 6:00 in the morning, the walk from San Gabriel over to Alvera Street. And certainly, our 225 years as a city is something to celebrate and be proud of, no matter which neighborhood we live in. So with that, are there any adjourning motions, colleagues? Can I please ask everybody to rise for our adjourning motions? We'll begin with Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'd like to adjourn for an out of one of my staff members. Her name is, was Patricia Carol Bradshaw. She passed away August 14. She joined Bethlehem Temple Church in 1966, where she sang in the choir, and she was a wonderful individual, and she'll be missed by a host of family and friends.
Thank you. Do we have other adjourning motions? Mr. Smith?
Each day in this city, our police officers get to witness some of the ugly side of life. And then three weeks ago, in that role as a police officer, as a reserve officer, I was heading back to the station about 1:00 a.m. in the morning, doing my duty, and a stabbing call came out four blocks from me. I responded to the scene just as our firefighters got there. A young man named David De'Amorelli died as I got there from stabbing wounds. It's a tragic thing to see and witness. Our police and fire see it every day, but when you see someone die in front of you, it means so much more to adjourn in his honor. I spoke to his mother, and she wanted to know what the last moments of his son's life were like. And I explained to her that it was very quick and fast, fortunately for him, but it's a tragic loss, certainly. He was a 4.0 student at Pierce College, had just gotten a full scholarship from UC Santa Barbara, had great things to do in his life and great accomplishments that would never be reached, and it's a tragedy to lose good people like that, particularly as our, excuse me, as our RHD, our detectives followed the very snippet leads they had over the past three weeks, they made an arrest two days ago, and the whole thing was over a stealing of the young boy's laptop computer. What a wasted life. May we adjourn in the memory of David De'Amorelli.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other adjourning motions? Again, anybody who needs our services while the council's in recess can call 311 or our offices directly. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk. We will next meet on Tuesday, the 12th of, sorry, of September, and until then, this meeting and the City Council is adjourned. Thank you all very much.